Good afternoon, and welcome to the October 6, 2025 Meeting of the Atlanta City Council. My name is Dustin Hillis, President Pro Tem of the Council. The President is out today. I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Good afternoon, Mr. President Pro Tem and members of council. We have Councilmember Michael Julian Vaughn, Post One at Large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post Three at Large. Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District One.
Here.
Councilmember Carden Wyckoff, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Dozer, District Four.
Present.
Councilmember Lanianna Bakteri, District Five.
Here.
Councilmember Alex Wong, District Six. Councilmember Howard Shook, District Seven. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District Eight.
Here.
Council President Pro Tem, Dustin Hillis, District Nine.
Present.
Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, District Ten.
Present.
Councilmember Marcy Colley Overstreet, District Eleven.
Present.
Councilmember Antonia Lewis, District Twelve. Mr. Mayor, Mr. President Pro Tem, we do have a Court of Members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And you did mention her name in the roll call, but I'll take a point of personal privilege and welcome Carden Wyckoff, Councilmember Carden Wyckoff, to her first council meeting as our appointee to the District Three.
Thank you.
And before we get to the adoption of the agenda, I will, with no objection, I'll make some modifications. We do need to handle two committees and Committee of a Whole today, and that is Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee and the Transportation Committee. So we will rearrange those to take those at the beginning of the Report of Standing Committee so we can enter Committee of a Whole to handle both of those. And so I will make a motion to adopt. Is there a second? Second, and we can handle that by unanimous consent. Madam Clerk, please sound the count of unanimous consent.
Nine yeas, zero nays. Ten yeas, zero nays.
Ten yeas and zero nays. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll be moving on to the invocation. We do not have a pastor with us today, so I will hear from councilmembers for any remembrances before we have our moment of silence. Councilmember Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. I would like to send condolences to the family and friends of Matthew Cardinelli, who was a wonderful spirit here in the city of Atlanta for so many years. He was an advocate for progressive social change. He drafted some 21 ordinances and resolutions that are now law in the city of Atlanta, including laws for affordable housing, criminal justice reform, disability rights, public comment and public participation, community benefits, small businesses, and transparency. Let's all remember the work that Matthew did when he was here in Atlanta and beyond. He was also born in Plantation, Florida, and grew up in Broward County, Florida. Matthew Cardinelli, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boone. Anyone else? Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. I want to acknowledge and send our thoughts and prayers to the family of Ms. Sarah Lee Ridgeway. Ms. Ridgeway was a stalwart community member in the Venetian Hills community. She lived on Wichita Drive and had been very active, specifically active, for a very long time, both her Neighbor Association and her NPU and in her sorority. She was an active member of Semoga Ma Ro Sorority and encouraged her sorority sisters to stay engaged in public engagement, public and community engagement every step of the way, whether it's local government, whether it's federal government. She wanted to make sure that her sisters were at the forefront of every polling place, every election cycle, all the time. And so we lost her at tender age of 75, and our community members are mourning for her passing.
Thank you, Councilmember Dozier. Any other members before we enter a moment of silence? All right, let's have that moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the representative of which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, our own. Thank you. We'll be moving on to our proclamations. I'd like to invite Councilmember Andrea L. Boone in recognition of the Honorable Winfield Ward Murray and Morehouse College. And if you're here for that proclamation, you can please join us up here on the dais.
Will you all please stand and come up with the Honorable Winfield Ward Murray? Please stand if you are with Morehouse College and Winfield Murray. Please come on up. What a great day in the city of Atlanta, Georgia. Good afternoon. We are here to honor a native son, the Honorable Winfield Ward Murray at Morehouse College. Judge Murray has done so much good in the city of Atlanta, and this is just a small token of us saying thank you on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta. You have made us proud. And now a short video.
The Andrew Young Center for Global Leadership has been at Morehouse College for over 25 years. During that time, it has consistently focused on the leadership development of our students. Our Higher Education in Prisons program is considered a centerpiece of the Andrew Young Center. I say that because it is the perfect opportunity for Morehouse College to extend its unique mission and its unique curriculum into our community.
The United States locks up more people per capita than any other nation in the world. Georgia Department of Corrections says that two out of three incarcerated individuals in Georgia will return to prison within five years. But if you add higher education, those students who receive sustained courses, say the equivalent of an associate's degree, the number drops to 13% nationally. And for those who receive a bachelor's degree in prison, the number drops to 5%.
Teaching at Metro Reentry, wow, in the fall, was one of the most extraordinary experiences I have had as a professor in my life. The thing that was so remarkable to me at the end of the day is how much it affected me. So you go on thinking like you're going to make impact, you want to make impact, you're nervous that you won't. And then you come out and you realize you're the one who probably got the greatest gift.
In this role as a prison education ambassador, I go into the systems, you know, with the faculty and just I talk to the incarcerated individuals about just by education, how they can further themselves and that there is still much that they can do while they're in the system. So when I found out about this initiative that Morehouse had, I instantly knew that this is what I wanted to do and that it was for me.
There is something hugely gratifying having the opportunity to teach at Morehouse. Teaching at the prison, though, is also very special, given that these are typically individuals that feel that they have been maligned by the educational system. For them, having the opportunity to take college-level courses from instructors from Morehouse is a dream come true. So they take it very seriously because this is something that they thought that they would not have.
If you have knowledge of yourself, knowledge of your history, knowledge of your culture, it empowers you.
Everyone has potential, and education enables you to explore your potential, challenges your thoughts. You can explore your inventory of ideas and grow upon them. You're not also learning by yourself, you're learning with others. And it's through others that help you see your own potential.
Education is definitely a deterrent to crime. I want to say that outright because, again, and I can't express this enough, you can want to do better, but if you don't have the knowledge, you don't know how. I wanted to distance myself from my past. I wanted to create opportunities for myself. And if I didn't learn anything, how was I going to do it?
It's an audacious experiment. It attempts to take a space that is really used to punish people and turn it into an emancipatory space where people can feel free to hope and dream, to discover themselves and prepare themselves for returning into their respective communities.
I've always asked myself the question over seven, eight years that I was a part of the BPI program, where are the HBCUs? And I think back to the history of HBCUs and how they came into being. From what I've read, you know, the HBCUs were meant to help formerly enslaved people gain a foothold in society. The closest parallel to formerly enslaved people today, I think, are incarcerated people. And if HBCUs aren't leading the movement of college and prison programming, then they're not holding up to that mission. Like, we have to continue that fight.
Today, we have with us our Deputy COO, Theo Pace, the Honorable Judge Ronald Freeman, the Honorable Judge Eric Donaway, Rains Carter, City Solicitor, Kim Patrick from the City of Atlanta Law Department, who served with the Honorable Winfield Murray, former Chief of Staff, Marva Lewis. If you would raise your hand, Marva, thank you for being here. Hakeem Hilliard, Esquire, Morehouse, CFO of the Year, Mohammed Baloo, Wayne Martin, Jr., and so many others who have gathered today to pay tribute to a wonderful native son. Our first speaker, Meredith Lilly Esquire.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Can you all hear me? All right, thank you, City Councilwoman Andrea Boone. It is truly an honor to recognize my friend, my big brother, Judge Winfield Murray, a man whose life reminds us that real greatness isn't about position, it's about purpose. Now you've already heard his impressive bio, the education, the accomplishments, the impact. But what truly distinguishes Winfield isn't just his brilliance, but it's his heart. Although he grew up with opportunity right here in Atlanta, he has spent his life making sure others have the same. And let me tell you, he does it all in style. Did y'all see this suit? When Winfield and I go to dinner, I'm usually rushing in with a baseball cap and shorts on, very casual. But he's always sitting straight back in a perfectly tailored suit, like he just stepped out of a magazine. I always joke that he makes me feel like I'm showing up for a job interview. But within minutes, we're laughing, talking for hours about life, faith, and service. That's the balance of Winfield, polished on the outside, but humble and deeply genuine on the inside. He pours himself into the community as the debate coach at Morehouse. And let's give our guys from Morehouse a round of applause that are standing up here. He's shaping the next generation of sharp, confident young men as an educator inside Burris State Prison through Common Good Atlanta, ensuring that even those society has written off still have access to education, dignity, and hope. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is what are you doing for others?" George Murray answered that question every single day through mentorship, teaching, advocacy, and compassion. He's the kind of person who leads quietly but leaves an unmistakable mark wherever he goes. His work reminds us that greatness isn't measured by titles, but by how deeply one chooses to serve. So this afternoon, we don't just honor a federal judge, we celebrate a man who lifts as he climbs, who gives as he grows, and who proves time and time again that service is the truest form of leadership. Let's give a round of applause to Judge Murray. Thank you.
I also would like to recognize Attorney Rod Edmund. We love your family. We love your family. Thank you for all you do for the citizens of Atlanta. Also, Mr. Michael Tyler, thank you for all you and your family have done. Kathy used to be here with us on City Council. We will never forget her leadership. Thank you. And Dr. Tobe Johnson's son is also here. Thank you for everything that your father meant to District 10, the city, C.T. Martin, and everyone. Thank you. School Board Member Tolton Pace, thank you as well for being here. Our next speaker will be the Honorable Ronald Freeman, native of Atlanta. Judge, please come.
Good afternoon. I stand here another day proud to be a 1982 graduate of Morehouse College. But it is days like today that resonate with me, Morehouse men who continue to answer the call. And in this instance, it is definitely Judge Murray. What he is doing with the education there in the prison system, what he is doing at Morehouse College, but more importantly, what he is doing touching, living, and enriching the lives of Morehouse men is beyond remarkable. Judge Murray, thank you for being a true Morehouse man, and thank you for answering the call. Congratulations.
Our next speaker is Daxton Pettis.
Good afternoon. It is a pleasure to be here in honor of Professor Murray and in honor of the prison program. The class is about, or to get to the class, it is about 75 minutes from here to Burris Correctional Facility. After one of many Professor Murray's many jobs, I would meet him here or I'd meet him at the school, and we'd make that trip, and I would be a student at Burris Prison. And as people who go to the prison will soon learn, if they don't already understand, education is a right, even though lawmakers and politicians would make it a privilege and we would discuss it as such. Reflecting on Professor Murray's work and at my time at Morehouse, Spelman, Clark, Emory, and other collegiate institutions, the most rigorous, passionate, and reflective students I have seen at Burris Prison. The class is short, it is 60 to 75 minutes, but being in the classroom, it feels like you're living through lifetimes. It is a blessing in our society to have such programs that connect people who are incarcerated with books, education, and a mental mobility to think beyond the walls that confine them. In these prisons, I've seen actors that will make you forget that you're watching a play behind steel-guarded doors. I've heard violinists who play beautifully, self-composed parts of their own written symphony that they've written while incarcerated. And in each class that I visit, I leave better and more educated because of the attention, intellect, and growth that happens with the people who are incarcerated in those 60 to 75 minutes. It is a great thing for this work to be recognized, but it is the best thing for it to continue and grow beyond the walls of the people who are incarcerated in Burris and in Atlanta. And it must grow with people who view education not as a privilege but as a right. Thank you.
Dea Miller Landu.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. Winfield Ward Murray is a Morehouse professor, a federal immigration judge, an active member of Leadership Atlanta, leader of the nationally-ranked Morehouse moot court team. He's a father to a teenage daughter and a friend and mentor to many. But the thing that sticks out to me the most is that Winfield is an educator, not in a mansplaining, professorial kind of way. He's an educator in a way that makes the world make sense. He has an uncommon ability to see the world through the eyes of others. They learn something every time we talk. So it was my great honor to accompany him to Burris Correctional Facility, where through his work with Common Good Atlanta and Morehouse's Andrew Young Center's Higher Education in Prisons programs, he takes time out of his busy schedule to prepare lesson plans, drive in Friday rush hour traffic, go through security in a maze of locked gates to bring context and education to prisoners, men who are largely forgotten by society. This Morehouse man in his three-piece suit somehow makes these men feel like his equal. He doesn't dumb it down, instead, he lifts it up. Winfield teaches them to realize their ideas matter, and he believes it, and as a result, they believe it too. Some of these men grew up in prison, others have been incarcerated for decades, others are recent offenders. They are imprisoned for a range of mistakes, often infused with a complex stew of poverty, racism, and other societal challenges. These issues are complicated and hard, but the data is irrefutable. When prisoners get education in prison, they are less likely to reoffend. They believe they can positively, if they believe they can positively contribute to society, they will. I was honored to write an article about Winfield's work for Atlanta Magazine, and I am honored to be here today to see, to share how Winfield's work helps other people make sense of the world. We should all be so lucky to have such a friend.
And now for the official proclamation in recognition of the Honorable Winfield Ward Murray, whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize the uncompromising collegiate education within the Georgia prison system provided by Professor Judge Winfield Ward Murray of Morehouse College. Professor Murray has taught incarcerated students for more than half a decade through both Common Good Atlanta and Morehouse College. And whereas Professor Judge Murray believes that higher education is a human right and that incarcerated individuals are indeed intellectual beings that deserve access to higher education. And whereas approximately 2 million people are incarcerated in the United States, of which seven in 10 are individuals of color, and a significant number are for nonviolent offenses such as drug possession and property crimes. The United States spends nearly $182 billion annually on its mass incarceration system. And whereas the college education provided by Professor Winfield Murray benefits incarcerated individuals, their families, taxpayers, the city of Atlanta, the state of Georgia, and beyond. And whereas said college education has significantly reduced the rate of recidivism and increased post-release employment, which results in successful reentry of formerly incarcerated individuals overall. And whereas the college education provided leads to intergenerational mobility by breaking the cycle of inequality and incarceration. And whereas Professor Judge Murray not only serves as a professor of students at Morehouse College, as well as a professor within the Georgia prison system, but he also serves as a United States immigration judge. Murray began his legal career serving at the helm of Atlanta's Community Court for seven years. In his capacity as a professor at Morehouse College, he has continued a longstanding tradition of sending African-American men to law school to help increase the number of African-American attorneys in this country, which currently stands at only 5% of the legal profession. Murray continues to equip his pre-law students with the tools necessary to change the world by immersing his students in experimental learning, such as merging his classes taught on the campus of Morehouse with those inside prisons, resulting in students that are more aptly prepared to one day represent marginalized groups in courtrooms across this country. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members... Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, do hereby proclaim Judge Winfield Ward Murray Day in the city of Atlanta, Georgia. The next voice you will hear will be that of Judge Winfield Ward Murray.
Good afternoon, and thank you to everyone who is here today, especially all of the Morehouse alums, who continue to make Morehouse a beacon of hope, not just in Atlanta, but across the globe. I want to thank the organizations that have made this type of work possible, namely, the Andrew Young Center for Global Leadership at Morehouse and Common Good Atlanta, which has allowed Morehouse faculty to go inside Georgia prisons to teach college courses. Thank you to my former and current Morehouse students who have journeyed into the prisons with me. When they go off to law school, they will have an insight and exposure that few other law students will have, and they will practice law with empathy and wisdom beyond that of their comrades. I also want to give a very special thanks to the Atlanta City Council, and in particular, Councilmember Andrea Boone, who made all of this possible. It is rare. It is rare that this type of work is acknowledged, valued, and appreciated. So Councilmember Boone, I want to sincerely thank you for shining a light on this type of important work. I started my career off as a prosecutor with the city of Atlanta under Reince Carter, and it was an eye-opening experience. I quickly realized two things. One, crime almost appeared to be a revolving door. Individuals were arrested, incarcerated, released, and then they would reoffend, continuing a vicious cycle that seemed to have no end. And second, most perpetrators are not inherently evil. Most are committing nonviolent crimes, and most are doing so because of one of four reasons: lack of education, lack of fiscal resources, substance abuse issues, and/or mental health issues. Reince Carter allowed me to head up Atlanta's Community Court, and I did so for seven years. In Community Court, we would address the underlying issues of why an individual was committed a crime. Every day, I would go down to the basement of Municipal Court to judge Clint DeVoe's courtroom. And in that courtroom, we changed lives. We saw the rate of recidivism drop by at least 38%. In my opinion, that is a tremendous success. Fast forward, years later, I was still armed with the knowledge that restorative justice can make our community safer without the expense of more jails and longer prison sentences. And that is when I met Sarah Higginbotham, who was teaching inside prisons. We shared the belief that education is a human right. My dad was a local physician in Atlanta, and he loved math and science. He always taught me that numbers do not lie. Well, the numbers for prison education do not lie. The rate of recidivism for those who have access to college education shows a rate of recidivism as low as 0.01%. That is nothing short of phenomenal. The numbers paint a bleak picture for African-American men, where black men are five and a half times more likely to be imprisoned and receive disproportionately longer sentences. So it is befitting that Morehouse College, the only college dedicated to educating black men in this country, would take up the cause to go inside prisons to ensure that incarcerated men are able to obtain a higher education. The numbers do not lie. Restorative justice courts and education inside our prisons work. As a professor at Morehouse, teaching inside the prison and demanding the same level of work that we demand from our traditional students has been a transformative experience. Individuals who never thought they would have an opportunity to sit in a college course now have that opportunity. They now have hope when they did not think that that was even possible. One of my incarcerated students said it best. "I never would have dreamed that I would have a year in my life where I would read, digest, and discuss Shakespeare, Jay-Z, Brown versus Board of Education, Plato, and Van Gogh, all in one year." Ladies and gentlemen, that is the power of education. Thank you.
Thank you on behalf of the city of Atlanta. In recognition of Morehouse College, whereas the Atlanta City Council is pleased to recognize the extraordinary efforts of Morehouse College through its Andrew Young Center for Global Leadership by providing accredited college courses to incarcerated men. And whereas Morehouse College has provided college-level humanities courses to incarcerated students since the fall of 2020 through partnerships and its own innovation. And whereas Morehouse College is the only college in the United States with the unique mission to educate and empower black men to become leaders of consequence in all fields and to use their intellect to serve something greater than themselves. And whereas Morehouse College is focused on addressing systematic inequalities, whether they are societal barriers, economic barriers, or cultural barriers that face black men. And whereas the national rate of recidivism is 76.6%, while the recidivism rate for people receiving college education is reduced to only 5.6%. And whereas studies demonstrate for every dollar invested in prison education saves taxpayers $4 to $5 in reincarceration expenses. And whereas incarceration is not an equal-opportunity punishment, given that black Americans are incarcerated at more than five times the rate of whites. And whereas Morehouse faculty believes that the college has more moral authority to speak to the issues impacting black men, whether any other place on the planet. Morehouse faculty ensure that their work in prison education provides incarcerated men with exposure to educational resources that will increase their human capital and support the upliftment of their families and community. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of Atlanta, do hereby recognize Morehouse College and the Andrew Young Center for Global Leadership for providing transformative education to incarcerated students in the Georgia prison system. Our city extends its appreciation to your dedication, compassion, and ongoing success. Congratulations.
On behalf of the Morehouse College Andrew Young Center for Global Leadership, we want to say thank you. We want to thank Professor Winfield Murray for his consistent demonstration of, I don't even know how to describe what he's done. Dr. Murray started before we started doing this work and has demonstrated the impact of this important work. I also, I want to thank the leadership at Morehouse for making this possible, for supporting our efforts. The president of the college, the provost of the college, and all of the faculty who have been involved in this work. I also want to thank Common Good Atlanta. They have been doing this work far longer than us and have paved the way for many institutions in the state to offer courses to incarcerated students. I just want to say thank you so much, and we're very honored. Thank you.
Give us your name and title.
Good afternoon. My name is Javaro Michael Edwards. I am currently serving as the National Alumni President for Morehouse College, and I also sit on the Board of Trustees. All of the accolades that have been presented to my friend, Winfield, and our daughters actually go to school together. So we've known each other for a number of years, and on behalf of our 18,000 members of our alumni group, thank you for doing the work that you do. And another behind-the-scenes thing that you don't know is that this man right here truly takes it upon himself to make it happen. Driving his own car or renting a van and driving these young men across the country to compete in these moot court activities goes above and beyond the reaches of what his charge is. Being on that same side behind the scenes with you and sharing that with you makes my heart just glow, because it takes those types of efforts to make sure that the charge of Morehouse College and the charge of what you do gets out to everyone and exposes these young men to experiences that they probably wouldn't get to. So thank you so much. I want to thank the Atlanta City Council. You guys do phenomenal work, and if Morehouse College can partner with you at any point, that's what we're here to do. So thank you so much.
I do want to note that our Chief of Staff and our Deputy COO, our members of Morehouse College, and the CFO of the Year, Mohammed Abalo. Theo Pace, would you come in your own way? Come on your own. Deputy COO, Theo Pace.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do want to say that my brother, Winfield Murray, which is from the class of 1998, I see you stay representative, L.M.I.D. Holly in the audience, he truly represents, you can tell a Morehouse man, but you cannot tell him much. I met Winfield in August of 1994. We both served as freshman-class officers, and my first acknowledgement of him was that he wore a perfectly knotted tie that he still wears today. A fun fact, his grandfather actually taught my mother in high school in Haywood County, Tennessee. His mom went to school with my aunt, so Winfield and I go way back a number of years. Also neighbors as well, in the greatest district in the city of Atlanta, District 10. So I'm honored to be here with all of my Morehouse brothers and other men of Morehouse here today to celebrate this man, because he has done so much, not just for the college, but for the community as well. So just want to say thank you, brother. Appreciate you.
Attorney Rod Edmund Esquire.
I'm going to say the obvious. Again, Rod Edmund from Atlanta, and I've had the blessing of knowing Winfield now probably about 15 to 20 years. This man is an angel. He has a spirit of giving that I haven't seen in a long time. He does it lovingly. He cares about the students. He cares about our community. And all I want to say, his brother, keep on doing what you do, and as old folks like me, I'm going to keep on following you, man. All right? Thank you so much.
Wayne Martin Jr.
I know the time is far spent, but I'd be remiss if I did not recognize my good brother here today. You represent all that is good about a Morehouse man, and that is to learn, to earn, and to return. Clearly, you are a standout student, and you learn so much. We can look at your suits and tell you've earned a lot, and I've been to your house, so I know you've earned a lot. But most importantly, you have done the return. You are giving back to students across the state and right on our campus of our sacred grounds that we know as Mother Morehouse College. I appreciate you, and my organization is going to contribute to your efforts to help and support the debate efforts, as well as your Common Good work, so you don't have to rent cars and pay for it out of your pocket. Thank you, my brother. I love you. Congratulations.
I know this young man truly believes in what Winfield stands for, his long legacy in this city. Hakeem Hilliard.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boone. Winfield reminds me of a character from a book, from a Nigerian playwright, Aye Kwe Ammar. In the story, when I think about Winfield, there's a part in the novel where there's a character that's going back and forth trying to save Africans from being brought to America. And he keeps putting himself in dangerous ways to save these folks over and over again, so much so that people around him are laughing. So why would you go out here and try to save these people? You need to save yourself. And his response was, "There is no self to save without the rest of us." And that's what Winfield represents for me, so I appreciate you.
And now we will have an official photo with the city of Atlanta. Please come forward, Judge Murray. Will everyone join us for an official photo? Thank you. Quickly move to the reception, to the left, to the reception area. Our reception for the Honorable Judge Winfield Murray will be to the left.
up, for the proclamation in honor of Delta Airlines and Hartsfield-Jackson for its centennial anniversary. If you're here for this proclamation, please join us on the dais.
Good afternoon, everyone. Have two proclamations to honor at the same time. One is for the world's greatest airline, Delta Airlines, and the other one is, of course, our very own Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. You know, a little under 22 years after the first flight was ever taken, Delta had the audacity to start off as Huff-Dalen Dusters. And 100
of Atlanta, thank you to the city council, thank you to Mayor Dickens. This city has been an incredible home for Delta Airlines. It has allowed Delta to truly thrive and become one of the world's greatest airlines. And I will tell you, I'm proud to say that Atlanta not only has been an incredible home to us, but it will be our home for as long as Delta Airlines exists. And I can't wait. I was about to say that I can't wait to be here at the 200th bicentennial, but I realized I won't be here, but we will be here to celebrate our 200 years because just like the best is yet to come for this great city of Atlanta, the best is yet to come for Delta Airlines. Thank you so much.
Any of my colleagues want to say anything? Definitely?
Yes, please. So, I'm a Delta Airlines retiree. Delta Airlines is what life is all about for me and has been since I was an 11th grader at Benjamin Elijah May's High School and I started in that summer program and I knew that as soon as I graduated high school, all I wanted to do was work for Delta Airlines and I did that. It was only supposed to be for two years and it ended up being 20 because it's the best place to work on the planet. I enjoyed every minute of it. I'm enjoying being a retiree and I'm absolutely in a whole nother phase of my life where I am enjoying being on the Transportation Committee for the city of Atlanta for the world's most busy and most efficient airport and Delta Airlines is holding that airport down. And so, this is a very proud moment, so well deserved because all of my favorite things have come together today. So, congratulations and I too want to be here for the 200.
Just want to give Delta Airlines a huge congratulations. As a board member on the Delta Airlines Disability Advisory Board on accessible air travel, I personally choose Delta because of its commitment to accessibility and really excited to be here to honor them for their centennial, their accomplishments. So, thank you for being such a great airline service for the disability community and being here in Atlanta.
So, moving right ahead along, keeping these planes on schedule, you cannot have, you can't have planes in the air without someplace for them to land. So, as we have the world's greatest airline behind us, Delta, we have been joined by the leadership of the world's most efficient airline, most efficient airport, there we go, Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. And of course, both of them have celebrated their centennials, but you know, the proclamation has got on a council flight, but that's another story. They are here today and we're going to go ahead and in recognition of the centennial anniversary of Hartsfield-Jackson, Atlanta-Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport, whereas in 2025 marks the centennial anniversary of Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, commonly known as ATL, a milestone celebrating 100 years of service, growth, and progress in the city of Atlanta. Whereas the airport's forward-looking ATL Next Capital Improvement Program has transformed infrastructure and opportunity, generating $4.9 billion in approved invoices since 2015. Whereas ATL Endurance Success is a testament to the vision, leadership, and innovation of city officials, airport management, airline partners, and the dedicated workforce who have built and sustained its global prominence over the past century. And whereas the centennial celebration of Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport provides a unique opportunity to reflect on its rich history, honor the individuals who have contributed to the success and inspire future generations to continue ATL's legacy of excellence. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 100th anniversary of Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, committing its profound and lasting contributions to the city of Atlanta, to the state of Georgia, and to the world.
Good afternoon. It is indeed an honor to be here for this special day on behalf of our great mayor, the 1,000 employees of Department of Aviation, and the 63,000 employees that keep Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport going. I am truly honored to be here. You know, it was just 100 years ago where this campus was a racetrack and it employed some 100 people. The airport now employs over 63,000 employees, has an economic impact of over $30 billion annually. It is considered the gem of the South and it is the busiest and most efficient airport in the world. It is amazing what can happen when you have leadership making very difficult decisions over that 100-year period. Millions of decisions were made and obviously many of those decisions were good decisions and that's why we're standing here today. So, again, thank you, Chairman, members of the council for this honor. It is truly a pleasure being here.
Thanks, sir. Any colleagues want to say something? We've been joined by our city attorney, of course, and our Deputy COO. Any words? No? Okay. All right. Well, since Michael Bond isn't here, I say it for them, let's do what we do best, take a picture. So, if everybody can move up front.
At this time, I'll be offering a proclamation that was scheduled to be offered by President Shipman in recognition of the Department of Customer Service, ATL 311, and Customer Service Week. All right. Good afternoon again. So, again, this is in recognition of the Department of Customer Service, ATL 311, and Customer Service Week. Whereas the Atlanta City Council proudly joins organizations across the nation in celebrating Customer Service Week, a time dedicated to recognizing the vital role customer service plays in strengthening communities and ensuring government services are accessible, effective, and responsive. And whereas the Department of Customer Service, ATL 311, provides the citizens of Atlanta with simple and convenient access to essential city services and information, exemplifying its mission to serve the public with diligence, care, and efficiency. And whereas exceptional customer service is a cornerstone of ATL 311's operations, fostering trust, accountability, and strong relationships with residents, businesses, and visitors alike. And whereas ATL 311's diverse and dedicated workforce consistently demonstrates professionalism and responsiveness, helping ensure that Atlanta remains a welcoming and efficient city for all. And whereas Customer Service Week offers an important opportunity to highlight and celebrate the contributions of the city's customer service professionals whose efforts often go unseen but are deeply felt across every neighborhood in Atlanta. And whereas the city of Atlanta recognizes that investing in and honoring our customer service workforce is essential to advancing the city's mission and improving quality of life for all residents. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Atlanta, do hereby declare October 6 through 10, 2025, as Customer Service Week in our great city and call upon all Atlantans to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of our customer service professionals and it is stamped with the city seal and signed by all council members and the council president. Commissioner Good, thank you so much to you and your team. I'm lucky to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Hillis, and to members of the Atlanta City Council for honoring us today, ATL 311. And we appreciate your continued support and leadership. To Mayor Dickens, COO Burks, and D.C.O. Pace for giving me the opportunity to lead a dynamic group of employees in the department, in which some are standing behind me today, but I can assure you that we have a big team on the phone still helping our customers. Customer Service Week is an international celebration that recognizes the importance of customer service and of the people who serve and support customers daily. In ATL 311, our goal is to ensure that we offer excellent customer service with a true heart of service. Thank you, ATL 311 family, for all the great work you do and for making every customer feel heard, valued, and appreciated, with the goal to turn every interaction into a positive experience. Your dedication and care does not go unnoticed and we are so thankful for the positive impact you make on every customer's journey. Thank you, ATL 311 family, for all the great work you do and we wish everyone that is celebrating a wonderful Customer Service Week. Thank you again, Atlanta City Council.
And this time, I'll turn it over to Deputy COO, Theo Pace, for a few words.
Good afternoon. I just want to say on behalf of the mayor, Andre Dickens, and our Chief Operating Officer, LaChandra Burks, I do want to thank Commissioner Good and the staff of the Department of Customer Service for all the work that they do. They play an essential role within our department, within our administration, working with other departments to resolve customer and residential issues. So, I really want to say thank you to all and all the hard work that you all do. Thank you.
At this time, I'll welcome up Councilmember Jason Winston in recognition of Atlanta's primetime seniors for their participation in the 2025 National Senior Games.
Let everybody get cozy up here. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jason Winston and as Chair of the Community Development Human Services Committee, I am more than honored today as we recognize our primetime seniors who participated in the 2025 National Senior Games. Can we give a round of applause for everybody? So, I have a special proclamation I'm going to read, then we'll hear from our esteemed Commissioner of Parks and Recreation, Commissioner Justin Cutler. The Atlanta City Council recognizes Atlanta's primetime seniors for their participation in the 2025 National Senior Games, whereas the seat of Atlanta's Department of Parks and Recreation provides the Primetime Senior Program for adults over the age of 55 and over, 18 recreation sites across the city registering 2,250 seniors. And whereas the Primetime Senior Program offers cultural, educational, social, and physical activities for older adults. And whereas primetime seniors participate in Olympic-style multi-sport events held at the local, state, and national levels, promoting the benefits of competitive sports, physical fitness, and active aging. And whereas the National Senior Games Association hosts the biennial National Senior Game, which brings together over 11,000 participants over the ages, between the ages of 50 to 100-plus from across the United States and Canada to compete in more than 25 sports since 1987. And whereas this world-class competition celebrates the athletic accomplishments of older adults and inspires people of all older adults and inspires people of all ages to be active. And whereas 52 athletes representing the seat of Atlanta from the Primetime Senior Program participated in the Georgia Golden Olympics in Warner Robins, Georgia, qualifying them to compete at the National Senior Games that was held July 24 through August 4 in Des Moines, Iowa. And whereas these senior athletes represented eight different Department of Parks and Recreation facilities, including Reverend James Orange, Roselle Phan, Washington Auditorium, C.T. Martin, Grove Park, Bessie Branham Collier Park, and William Walker Recreation Centers. And whereas the seat of Atlanta's Office of Recreation staff coached, coordinated, transportation, and encouraged these senior athletes at the National Senior Games. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of the city of Atlanta, do hereby proudly recognize and celebrate the outstanding perseverance, dedication, and achievements of the seat of Atlanta's primetime senior athletes, who serve as examples of what is possible for residents and visitors of all ages, signed by all members of the Atlanta City Council. Congratulations to our primetime seniors. I'll bring up Commissioner Cutler.
Well, first, thank you, Councilmember Winston, and members of Atlanta City Council for recognizing our amazing primetime seniors. Let's give another round of applause. As you can see around many of the necks are gold medals, silver medals, bronze medals for their hard work and dedication to bring home medals for the city of Atlanta for our primetime senior program. But I also want to recognize a special group of people, the City of Atlanta Parks and Recreation Staff. They showed up day in and day out. Many of these seniors, we had a reception before, were talking about just how loving and committed our staff are to making sure that they got where they're going, at the right time, at the right place, are able to cheer each other on, coach the members of the primetime senior company. So thank you to the Department of Parks and Recreation Staff. Let's give them a round of applause. And thank you to the families of these athletes. You know, it's the families that also show up, making sure that they get to where they need to go, supporting them day in and day out. So thank you to the families of these athletes, these Olympians, and let's have a great celebration today. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Womack.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would also like to thank everyone here in City Council, the Honorable Mayor Andre, all of you, all the staff of the Office of Recreation. This has been a long time coming, and we do appreciate the recognition. When we first started out, we had 26. We have doubled that amount of seniors, most of them who have medaled in one capacity or another. So we are just grateful. We are not getting older, we are getting better. So watch out, world, here we come. We can do all things through our Christ who strengthens us. And this is an example of what you see. So if you have relatives out there that are 55, we had 18, we now going towards 20 recreational sites. We will work with you, we will train you, and we will get you in shape. And next year, you'll be standing up here with us. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you, councilpeople.
And next, I'm going to welcome up one of my favorite constituents in District One, Ms. Maggie McCollum.
Thank you, thank you. On behalf of the Olympians, I wanted to give something to our mayor, Andre Dickens. In his absence, I would ask his COO, Theo Pace, would you please come up? We just wanted to share with the mayor to know that we are out here doing what he would have us to do. And that is doing our best in everything with good health, goodwill, and good God to keep us going. So I wanted to give you him this piece, this donation from the Olympics. And also to Commissioner Cutler, I wanted to give you something from the Olympics that we went and participated in, to let you know, you may have not been there with us, but you was in our heart. And we thank you for giving us the opportunity to share these citizens in Atlanta. We are grateful. So don't think that your work is not done, because somebody is always looking out for those. May not call your name, but we know you are there. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. McCollum. On behalf of our 61st mayor and our COO, as Commissioner mentioned, really want to thank the Department of Parks and Recreation Staff for all the work that they do. And congratulations to each of these seniors. I heard all the medals clinking when you all were walking up. So the word for today is, I'm not getting older, I'm getting better, and I will see you all in about years. Thank you again. And did any of my colleagues want to say anything? Okay, so seeing none. But I just want to, again, just say, y'all look at these smiles. Look how happy they are. This is what it's all about. I just want to just say thank you to our Parks and Recreation Team, charge of programming, making sure that our seniors can go out and represent us at these National Senior Games. But for what you do every day at our senior centers, our recreation centers around the seat of Atlanta, having a place for them to gather, having a place for them where they belong, having a place where they can get together and communicate with one another, and know that this city cares about them, this Parks and Recreation Department cares about you, and we, this city council, cares about you. And just know that we're going to continue to invest in these programs to make sure that you have somewhere to get together together. So thank you all again, and we'll take our photo. Thank you.
That concludes our proclamations. Before we move on to public comment, I do want to, again, recognize Councilmember Carden Wyckoff and have her, if any statements or thanks wants to be given at this time.
This is probably easier. Well, thank you. It's really an honor to serve the constituents of the city of Atlanta as Councilmember of District Two. It's just, I'm so thankful to be here, surrounded by amazing colleagues, councilmembers, staff. I've been incredibly supportive over the last couple of weeks. My term is fairly short. It's unusual, I only have until December 31st, but we are making it work. And I think what is also really exciting about this is just being a representative of the disability community in government. It's often thought of as an afterthought, and I hope that I can just shed a little bit of light, recognizing accessibility and the importance of disability inclusion within the DEI space. And just, yeah, thank you so much to my mom, who's down there with a purple camera, and my dear friends Peter and Brian for also being here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And this will begin our public comment time. Again, unless you've been allocated time, you'll be allowed two minutes. The clock will start when you get to the podium, and will promptly end at the conclusion of your time. First up, I have Maggie McCollum. You have four minutes.
To all of my councilmembers, I always have to share, because there are so many seniors don't have a voice to speak or know what to say. So I am here on behalf of these seniors and also a part of Commission on Aging. Put others before yourself, and you can become a leader amongst men. Matthew 20:27. And whosoever will be chief amongst you, let him be your servant. I don't know if you are self-reliant but not self-sufficient. I don't know if you are steadfast but not stubborn. I don't know if you tender-hearted but not touchy. I don't know if you are generous but not gullible, meek but not weak, progressive but not pretentious. I am speaking about Atlanta Housing Authority. I'm speaking because there are five Section 8 houses on my street within a quarter of a mile. Three of those houses are right in front of me. We are letting investors buy up everything. And when they buy up things, they put people into places, not thinking about the community. Those are young people, mostly. They have parties, there are shootings, they are blocking the street when they are partying, don't even care about public safety. There are multiple people that are staying into these places. Why is this so? When Atlanta funds AHA, I have tried on numerous times to give them a call. The phone is like a robust call. It just goes and goes and goes, and you hold, and you hold, and hold, and nobody never picks up the phone. I've tried emailing, no response. I even tried texting, no response. Why can't we hold Atlanta Housing Authority accountable? These are tax dollars. I know we pay, I work. They can ride in nice cars, Lexus, Camrys, Nissans. Now, if you can pay for cars, you can actually pay for somewhere to stay. I have been at the bottom, so I know how hard it is to work your way up and still raise a child. But if you trust God, you can make it. I am tired. Can I get some assistance from this body on this matter? I have too many seniors staying in my neighborhood. I have an older neighborhood. My house I live in is 105 years old and is still standing. We have gotten away from community. We are beginning to build things, just build them. We don't care if it looks like the community or not, because we ain't got to stay there. Will this body of leaders rectify these problems for me? Thank you.
Next is Noel Heatherland.
Hello, my name is Noel Heatherland. I reside in District Three of our great city. I work for Georgia Equality, an organization that focuses on LGBTQ+ human rights and also cares very much about the housing policies in this city for all human beings. My partner and I came out today to speak alongside the Coalition for Justice for Cornelius Taylor on behalf of his memory, and asked the city to make caring for all of our people who are unhoused more of a priority. We know that LGBTQ+ people are significantly represented in the population of folks who are housing insecure. And personally, my household, like many others, is just a couple of missed paychecks away from potentially finding ourselves unable to pay our rent. The city has presented one story to the public about what happened at Old Wheat Street. But those of us who either live there or have been on the ground regularly supporting the folks who live there know a different reality. In my time here today, I just want to name that quality, consistent meals, and wraparound services have been lacking for the people that were sent to Welcome House, and ask for you to all work with the residents to remedy this issue ASAP. We stand firmly against sweeping away our fellow neighbors and friends. There's never a justifiable reason to do sweeps. There's not adequate affordable housing in the city, and without rent control and other housing assistance programs being readily available to those who need them, we will continue to see folks who need to make a home out on our streets. To end, I would like to add you to please rename Old Wheat Street in honor of Cornelius Taylor. He deserves to still be alive. We can at least keep his name alive. Thank you.
Next is Walter Reeves.
Walter Reeves, workers' representative, have two issues. First of all, the federal government shutdown, the federal workers aren't being paid. Furloughed workers and essential workers can put in for unemployment at the Atlanta Career Center, which is right behind Peachtree Plaza, Peachtree Center, excuse me. And the only issue is that if and when they are repaid and get their back pay, then they just have to repay their, what they've received. This includes U.S. court workers. Secondly, it should be noted that I've had two national public policy successes in the past year. In January, I called in the, in December, actually, I called in the New Orleans truck attack three days in advance. The second issue, as I argued with U.S. Department of Justice, two years in advance, the very sordid issue involving child prostitution at the United States Embassy in Brussels. It should be noted that this is the socially appointed ambassadors in their entourage and does not include professional diplomats or locally hired and does not include professional diplomats or locally hired personnel. And this latter issue has delivered irreparable reputational damage to both our nation and our monetary system. And I've gotten a lot of street cred out of this, and my speaking fee is now $16,000. Thank you very much.
Next is Henri Jordan.
Give unto the Spirit of God everyone that is here, but now I have written unto you, "Not keep company with a man that is called a bonacater, or covetous, or idolater, or railler, or drunkard, or extortioner, with such a one know not to eat." 1 Corinthians 5, Chapter 11, verse. It has the idea of close habitual association. James, actions, or a bonacater, covetous, extortioner, drunker, etc., Jesus says not to eat with this person. I'm seeking to avoid going to hell. Let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works, and glorify your Father, which is in heaven." St. Matthew 5, Chapter 16, verse. It is to set his light upon a candlestick, not hide it under a bush, that is a basket. When you hide what Christ is doing through me, then you fight against God's light working to help you. And Solomon said, "If he will shew himself a worthy man, there shall not have him fall to the earth; but if weakness shall be found in him, he shall die." 1 Kings 1, Chapter 52, verse. The news of Solomon's kingdom brought an end to Ananias' plan. James Christopher asked him for your death when he asked you to do wrong. So, obey Jesus is life, because the foolishness of God is wiser than men, and the weakness of God is stronger than men. 1 Corinthians 1, Chapter 25, verse. Not many wise, the nature of Paul's argument tells us that most of the Corinthians congregation were of the poor class of Corinthian society. Christ desires us not to trust in our flesh, and to trust in Him working in us. When you grab your self-credit for what Jesus has done through me, then you fight against Christ's gift working in me, not me. Jesus didn't tell me James Christopher's against His word, and God's word created the income. You looking at me? I can submit to God's Spirit for the gift to operate, not your way.
Thank you. Your time is included. Next is Valerie Anderson. Due to allocated time, you'll have four minutes.
Good afternoon. I wanted to know, and this is a serious question that I have. If I am showing up here for my son, Devon Anderson Jr., to get justice for my son for a year and two months, yesterday made a year and two months, I lost my son to Melvin Potter, of duty police officer who was on probation when he murdered my son. I've been coming down here now a year and two months. So, if I'm doing my part, what I want to know, why you are not doing your part? I would never think it's going to take a year for me to find out something, anything about why my son was murdered, why my son was murdered by Melvin Potter, murdering Melvin. Why? Haven't gotten any answers as to why it happened, haven't gotten any answers as to the obstruction charge that he got. What's going on with that? Because it's two separate, it's two separate situation. We have him murdering my son, and we have him being charged with obstruction. So, it's not the same thing. So, I want to know what you all doing? Because if I'm doing my part, I need you all to do your part. Because I feel, as his mother, Devon Anderson Jr.'s mother, my son deserve, deserve. I want to know why my son was murdered. I want to know why my son was murdered. And I want to know a year and a half in, two months, why I can't get any goddamn answer as to why? Why? You murdered my son. You're accountable for him, just like I'm accountable for my son, being a mother to my son. You're accountable to him. You all get up in these seats, you get voted into these seats, you may not use a word "promise," but once you get jobs like this, say, you're making a promise to the people to make their lives better. That's what, that's what you are promising to do, to make their lives better. My life has not been better since August 5th, 2024, has not been, has not been for me. I miss my son every day that I feel that I have to come here every Monday, which don't get it twisted, I'mma be here like I promised from day one. I'mma show up and be present for my son. I am going to get justice for my son, no matter how long it takes. I don't care how long it takes for me to get justice for my son. I don't care who tired of seeing me, who tired of hearing me. That's a you problem, that's not a me problem. Because Devon Sherman Anderson Jr. is my son. I'm his mother. So, Mr. Jason Winston, I appreciate you introducing yourself to me. Pleased to meet you. Mr. Amos, I know we spoke, you know, we had a talk. So, I would like to know what's going on with the obstruction charge? Why we not hearing anything? Keith Meadows, I don't even know what to say about him because he's at, I know he's not at work and being investigated, or whatever the case is, but why am I not hearing anything from Fulton County? Why am I not hearing anything at all from Fulton County? Mr. Wes Marlin, we had a talk also, and I need to know if you could bring me up to speed as to what you found out. Ms. Collins, we spoke also. So, somebody tell me something. Well, Mr. Amos, I would ask you a question. What was, do you know anything about South Fulton? Because this right here, me asking questions, and nobody's answering me, that's disrespectful. That's goddamn disrespectful. And I'm not going to be standing up here and being disrespected. I'm not with that. Because if I ask a question and I call a name, I'm wanting an answer. I'm wanting a goddamn answer. Because I'm not coming down here just to be coming down here. My son was murdered, so I want an answer. I want an answer.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Your time is concluded, and Councilmember Amos has indicated he would like to speak.
Yes, Ms. Anderson, first and foremost, thank you for stopping to take the time and hold a conversation with me every time we talk. One of the things I am definitely clear on is you're very clear on the facts, and you keep me focused on what must be happening. Have not got an answer for you out of the city of South Fulton, but you made it clear as we spoke earlier today, it is a very different charge of obstruction that has happened, that he has been charged in, and this, we must find your answer on that. So, as I've said, I'm going down this road with you. Give me a time, and not a long time, either give me to next week to talk to the leadership to see exactly what we're doing about that individual charge, and then I continue my Everest City of South Fulton as well.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes. Hey, Ms. Anderson, good to see you. I know we talked a couple of times as well, I think, in turn, in also working collaboratively with Mr. Amos in terms of Fulton County. You know, we can try to find as many details as we can on where things are, but as you know, Fulton County being a different jurisdiction than the city of Atlanta, also the last time that we talk, and we can follow up with Chief Sheerbaum as well on where that is with the new charge, because also as we all, also as is noted with Mr. Potter's employment history, there is also civil service, sorry, the civil service here in part of all of this. So, we'll get some information, I'll do my part and get some information as I've done before, to get as much update to you since the last time that we meet and I met, and I'll get with Byron in terms of, you know, what he's found out with the separate charge, and also communicate with Chief again for you, have Chief Sheerbaum to reach out to you as always, okay? Thank you for that. It's good to see you as well.
Hi, Mr. Wes Marlin, I'd like to say to Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis. Mr. Lewis, I would like to say, thank you from day one.
Ms. Anderson, this is the councilmember's time to respond, since they were mentioned in public comment, so if you'll allow them to respond. We have Councilmember Wes Marlin and then Councilmember Lewis who would like to respond. Thank you.
No, it's okay. We can talk on the phone as well. And I was actually going to suggest that perhaps you and I could reach out to the district attorney together, so we can talk about that on the phone.
Councilmember Lewis.
Ms. Anderson, I appreciate you. We had to make sure that the, I know that they had a rule that they tried to bring into council whenever I used to try to speak in public comment, they said they used to have to say names first, but we found out that that's not a rule in council for real. And so, before you said my name, the chair was telling me I couldn't speak, and we were back making sure that he understood that the rule, that's not a rule, and that as a councilperson, if I want to speak to something, I can. And so, full out with you on this, and what I was going to say was, I want to reach out to see when was the last time APD updated you on this. That's my question to you. When is the last time APD? Okay, so that's what we'll work on, getting an update from APD on any new findings they may have, or anything of that sort. I truly appreciate, I hate that you have to come down here for this. I hate that you have to come down here for this. And we are with you full out, and my colleagues and I will work on a new update from APD to you. Thank you again. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next is Helen Williams.
This is for Jason Dozier. Good afternoon. My name is Helen Delilah Williams. I am a community member of Vine City, and have lived there over 40-plus years at the address of 642 Lester. The reason I stand before you today, the last time I was here, I was in front of the Transportation Committee speaking in reference of MARTA. My concern with MARTA is that the underserving of our community. MARTA has now moved into a different way of handling their patrons. I read the history of the Chief of Police, which came from the city of Atlanta. He was over Red Dog. Red Dog was decommissioned. Vine City English Avenue is a area of concern in which the city is strongly aware it's a dumping ground. It has been this blighted area over 30-plus years. I stand before you to say that, as now, I am a senior in this community, a young senior in this community, I have a concern of safety, I have a concern of the infrastructure in my community, I have a concern on how the property owners, major developers, who actually just overlook all the zoning codes that you actually have in place, and that's sad for seniors who's been there since day one. Our taxes are going up because of all the gentrifications that's going on. Thank you for the Westside Future Fund TAD, who helps us with our taxes as a senior residence in the community, because if we did not have that, we would no longer be able to have our homes because of the high taxes. I'm just asking that you step in and step out of these seats and walk in your communities. Speak to your seniors directly. They have something to say. We cannot all come down here and speak to you directly, but you're moving around. Please, just give them the, give them the ear. My last comment that I would like to spend my time on is to share with you of an incident that has happened to me here in the City Hall. I spoke at the transportation meeting, and then I went to the zoning location upstairs to look into a property issue that James R. Pad is a community developer, and he's harassing me on my property. So, I came down here to see what's going on with my property. I was 24 years old when I signed my lease on my house, or bought my house. I knew nothing. They said your mortgage was going to be 367. I was like, damn, okay. I pull up the table. 30 years later, I realize I don't pull up to a table I know nothing about. My house is on attack. My community has used my house as a landing spot. I have 19 versions of my name. Mr. Amos, I will not be able to register my vehicle. Reason being, I've been down to the DDS. I have nine vehicles already listed at my house, so I'm unable to list my vehicles, and that's sad. Back to the incident in the zoning area, then that was the reason I was up there checking on my property, I had the opportunity to sit down and speak with Ms. Cullums. When I sat down, the petition, at that large, fell on my head, and it's a 25 to 30-pound petition, it has all the metal things on the side of it, and if you're unsure what I'm speaking about, please go into the zone area. And the petition was carried off by two people. So, that lets you know it was extremely heavy. I was transported to Grady by the call of one of the city employees, discombobulated, not knowing whatever this, that, and the other, what was going on. Thank you to Ms. Robin, who took care of me in that area. I also was transported to Grady, but I'm going through identity theft. Grady had me listed, before I walked out of that hospital at 11 o'clock, five names. Five. I'm just one person. I'm really just trying to just be me. All I'm standing here to say to you now is that now I have a case against the city. Didn't want it, but God gave it to me. But I'm hurt. I go to chiropractor, I had this thing on my neck, I got this big old bruise on my head, a big old knot, as they call it, it went across my shoulder and my back. I'm still able to move around, but it's just sad. Please fix that, or put it back, and it placed the right mechanism to hold it down. It was not stationed. Thank you so much.
Next is Laronne McGee. Laronne, you are up.
Laronne McGee, volunteer activist, founder of From Me Until Unitas. Okay, I'm here today concerning the, what's that, the reserve on Hollywood, a reserve at Hollywood, the apartments. Due to a flood that happened on August 25th, a building in apartment complex, I believe was the B Building, had withstanded some water damage. And instead of them fixing it, last week, they told the tenants in that building that they had to be evicted or had to leave in two weeks. So, what I'm asking you, it's in your district, Councilmember Hillis, so what I'm asking if you could send someone down there, you know, for some aid and a little education. aid and a little education on the Georgia landlord laws for the, the management. Thank you so much.
And you stated, just to be clear, the reserves of Hollywood and it's the B Building?
Yeah, the reserves of Hollywood. Yeah, so they got two weeks to be out.
Understood. I'll look into that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next is Nikki Bugs. You have two minutes.
All right. Good afternoon. So let's, let's just speak frankly. I had the opportunity to visit a condominium association in Buckhead. The building was very similar to the landmark condominium downtown. The security system to punch into the building to have someone buzz you in was exactly the same. The building is beautifully kept. They have security. The building is well maintained. The landmark is not. And what's happening with, with the landmark condominium is that we're having deliberate distressment of the building. So this weekend, we had three elevators. None of the elevators were working. None of them. We have 22 floors. Therefore, if there's anyone that does not have the ability to travel up and down the stairs readily, then they, they were trapped in their homes. And if there was an emergency this weekend, then we all surely would have died. Or something awful would have happened. And those people would not have made it out. That is the truth of it. It's similar to the January 17th fire that took place in 2024. We could have died had there not been a fire truck across the street. That's where we are. So now these predatory property investors are wearing T-shirts, red T-shirts stating our landmark. So they're taking over the building. They're now proclaiming it as theirs. And I have been at this run, thank you, for four years, two months. And we're still talking about the same thing. A $30,000 security system that they alleged to put in is defunct. The city can limit certain things, strengthen enforcement, push elder and senior and tenant. You can push support for that. As I stated, if anything happens to me, I get sick, I die, I become incapacitated. You know, it's the type of people that we're dealing with. You have it all in your email. You have the evidence. We're residents. We're homeowners. We're constituents. The guest coming in from the Stitch.
Thank you, Ms. Bugs. Your time expires.
It is. The guest coming in.
Next up is Costco Jones.
The guest.
You have four minutes. Mr. Jones, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon, Council. You know, it's funny. Basically, everyone that's up here that has done public comment has already come and done public comment and they're talking about the same issues. The North remembers. This is Game of Thrones, right? The North remembers. Atlanta is a city of neighborhoods and those neighborhoods are changing faster than ever. Over the past 40 years, we've lost 42% of our majority black neighborhoods with families pushed out by projects, projects that didn't prioritize them or their future. What's making things even harder today is the role of the big out of state corporations. Corporate investors now own about 30% of metro Atlanta's single family rental homes. And in some recent years, they bought up the, bought up the rent more than 40% on, on the market in certain areas, 10 times more than the national average. Georgia State University found that a handful of companies now own and control tens of thousands of homes that used to be owned by local families. Meanwhile, over 88, 8,800 homes were sold in Atlanta last year. E-cell is a turning point for a family, a block and a community. Too often, these homes are snatched, snatched up for cash by investors, not residents looking to, you know, Asian place. We need to make sure that families, especially long-term, Atlanta families, these legacy residents, residents are not priced out of their homes by rising, by rising costs. Right now, the average Atlanta household spends up to 19% of their monthly income on utility bills. That's just too high. One solution is to require a simple energy audit before the home is sold. Think of it as a checkup for your new home. It shows where the, where the house is losing money, what upgrades would make it more comfortable and more affordable. Cities like Portland, Minneapolis, Austin, Texas already do this. Researching, including a major review published by the University of Illinois at Chicago shows that these policies cut bills by up to 20% and boosts home values for the long haul. But let's go further. With the 1.5 billion in reinvestment flowing into Atlanta, money should help the neighborhoods like Dixie Hills. Councilman Amos, we spoke on, you know, the Anderson Park thing. And, you know, it's opportunities here basically to help people get trained up. We have the resources here in the city. We just, we just had this announcement for the TAD dollars. We shouldn't be investing those TAD dollars into dilapidated properties without optimizing them from energy perspective. That's just good business as far as the overhead of the building. Let's, let's learn from what works. Like, energy audit and disclosure policies reviewed by the Institute for Market Transformation and the Atlanta Regional Commission. Let's keep Atlanta neighborhoods diverse and affordable. Let's make sure that the public investment benefits locals, not just outside corporations. Most importantly, let's give all families the tools they need to save money, build wealth and stay in their rooted neighborhoods. Early voting starts next week. Everybody's not an incumbent. Changes can happen. I do sit on three boards, but I'm done.
Next is Lonnie Laronne White. Due to allocated time, you have 10 minutes.
Good morning. My name is Lonnie Joseph White the Fourth, and I go by Think Peace Shop online. I'm a public library worker, 21 years old, in the DeKalb County Public Library System and a senior sociology student at Morehouse College, class of 2026. I was supposed to be at Atlanta City Hall on that stage today to represent the Higher Education and Prisons Program centered at Morehouse College in the Andrew Young Center. Respectfully, I'm at City Hall today for a different reason. Cornelius Taylor was crushed to death by the City of Atlanta on January 16th, 2025, by way of a bulldozer trying to push away homeless encampments for an MLK Day celebration. I'm gonna repeat that. An MLK Day celebration. The City of Atlanta didn't check under the tents before moving them because they like any empathy for the impoverished people of Atlanta who just so happen to be 80% black. What does this say about the black bourgeoisie class? What would E. Franklin Frazier say about this? Well, good thing for us, we already have the answer. Quote, "When the opportunity has been present, the black bourgeoisie has exploited the Negro masses as ruthlessly as have whites. As the intellectual leaders in the Negro community, they have never dared think beyond a narrow opportunistic philosophy that provided a rationalization for their own advantages." All this to say, the fact that Andre Dickens and the City of Atlanta have not been held responsible for this is a damn shame. And we must see what they are trying to pull by having us, me, come to City Hall. They are engaging in performative activism by using us as props, as backdrops to prove that they're making a difference in the community by supporting our higher education and prisons program when the opposite is true. We must also consider that this is the same city council and mayor of Atlanta have straight up ignored us working class natives of the Atlanta slash metro Atlanta area with the Cop City project. They have even gone out of their way to ignore a grassroots petition to put Cop City on the ballot so us citizens can vote on if we want a Cop City in our backyards or if we don't want a Cop City in our backyards. Mind you, this is the same class of black people who rightfully complained about voter tampering concerning Stacey Abrams' run for the Georgia governor and have done the exact same thing to us. Here's a quote from Frederick Douglass's 1852 speech, "What to the slave is the Fourth of July? The Negro is placed in a predicament where if he exerts himself, he is damned. And if he acquiesces, he is damned." They have removed our voice from the democratic process. And let's be clear, the city council and the mayor of Atlanta have shown us Atlanta natives, they will set up fascist infrastructure through creating, through crafting a militarized Cop City in DeKalb County while simultaneously destroying the wildlife and indigenous importance of the Wollani Forest. Also, this fascist infrastructure will be federally used by Trump when he brings ICE to our areas with the help of Governor Kemp. We've already seen a glimpse of this with the Hyundai plant raid and how our neighbors have been terrorized by ICE in this very state. To root this in something historical, this is similar to President Barack Hussein Obama appointing Tom Homan as the Immigration and Customs Enforcement's Executive Associate Director of Enforcement and Removal Operations in 2013. Journalists have described Tom Homan as the intellectual father of the policy which separates children from their caregivers, which he outlined years before it was adopted by the Trump administration. In 2015, Obama awarded him, awarded Tom Homan with a Presidential Rank Award as a distinguished executive for being really good at separating children from their caregivers. I say all this to say, the infrastructure he set up with Obama was used by Trump to increase far-right accelerationist policies on immigration that Tom Homan contributed to in the Project 2025 documents. What we have here is the black bourgeoisie class setting up fascist infrastructure for people like Trump to use later on down the line. And that is exactly what will happen to Atlanta and the state of Georgia when ICE is federally brought down here again with the help of George of Governor Kemp. When my manager for the Andrew Young Center Higher Education and Prisons Program told our cohort to put on the Respectability Act and show up in a meeting last week, I ignored it and wasn't going to show up. To be fair, they did tell us this so that we wouldn't wear sweatpants to City Hall, which is understandable. But as I was notified about this rally for Cornelius Taylor, I would like to say this today. I am here today for Cornelius Taylor instead of being used as propaganda for future mayor and slash political runs. As a black man from the Stone Mountain area, I know exactly what propaganda looks like. I grew up 10 minutes away from the largest Confederate memorial in the world. Let me repeat, not in Georgia, not in the United States, the entire world. At four to five years old, from the years of 2008 to 2009, I had to learn about the rebirth of the Ku Klux Klan on the mountain I love climbing on and how the Daughters of the Confederacy created this carving by way of Confederate whitewashing. I empirically understand through my lived experience and critical research on the subject that we must root our understandings of what exactly has been happening in the city over the past five years and what people like Andre Dickens and the city council have shown all of us. We must not allow Morehouse College or the legacy of MLK to go against the principles of standing up for what's right, especially in the absence of a voice in the democratic process. You can stand with natives like me or not. However, it's times like this where I love to go back to Morehouse's tagline slash mission statement. The decision you make to stand with us or stand against us will determine if you're a man of consequence or a man of subservience. Put Cop City on the ballot and to Andre Dickens and the city council specifically, hear me clearly. Stop retreating into your black bourgeoisie tendencies and listen to the working class people of this city for once in your lives. We will always hold you accountable for the death of Cornelius Taylor and how you have contributed to the dehumanization of impoverished people in this city. Shame on you and repent for your actions when you go to church on Sunday because the Lord would not co-sign what you all have done to the working people of Atlanta. Thank you. Ashay.
And then you spelled my name wrong. What the world? Good Lord. Lonnie Joseph White
the Fourth. L-O-N-N-I-E-J-O-S-E-P-H-W-H-I-T-E. The woman number was one and five. Four. Get my name right. What's wrong with y'all?
Next is Shakira Bradley.
How y'all doing? Blessed to have you. My name is Shakira Bradley. Today I'm here for Cornelius Taylor. Tomorrow I'll be here for myself. The injustice in Georgia is just insane. They so busy fighting for power at the top from the government, from the government courthouses, housing authority, the federal agency, all police departments. It's no say-so for the people who suffering the injustice, so they think. The same people who supposed to protect us and fight for our rights are the same exact people who made the same system to target confuse, deceive us. And that's a crime, shame and disgrace to the people who suffering the system. I've been at the center of a worldwide conspiracy for the last five years, every, for the last five years. And y'all, very lawmakers helping them write the laws concerning me. They did, y'all didn't expect me to survive, but I'm here in your face and I'm gonna fight for my rights and where's mine's. All my inheritance and bank accounts were trafficking through y'all same fourth encounter system. Y'all had a whole trial in 2022 about everything that I own. Y'all got, y'all got your own City of Atlanta attorneys on everything of mine from, from Andre Dickens, Brian Kemp. Now everybody lost. Y'all gonna face me and give me what, where's mine's. I'm gonna put up a fight and I won't stop. We gonna keep going. And if y'all knew what I knew, to stop what's going on anywhere, y'all will release everything that belonged to me. Y'all know who my father is, the God. Let's move on. Patrick LeBak, Governor Kemp and Andre Dickens name on every last one of my documents. They think they the successors. I'm the heir. Ain't none of them the successors and nobody gonna be bound to nothing I got going on in the future.
Next is Frank Bove. You have four minutes due to allocated time.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Bovey. I'm a retired CDC epidemiologist. Homelessness in Atlanta continues to rise driven by an affordable housing shortage, exorbitant rents and an eviction crisis. A recent city survey identified nearly 3,000 people who were either unsheltered or living in emergency shelters with minimal services. Family homelessness has surged 14% over the past year and most of these families are living in temporary emergency shelters. The city is planning to house and provide services to 400 homeless people ahead of the Summer 2026 FIFA World Cup. The effort dubbed Downtown Rising aims to eliminate visible homelessness downtown before the event. However, inconsistencies and delays in providing wraparound services to individuals from the Old Wheat Street encampment cast serious doubt on the city's capacity to meet that goal. Now, Atlanta has been down this road before. During the 1996 Summer Olympics, the city arrested unhoused individuals and created no vagrancy zones. There is growing concern that the lead up to the World Cup could again result in criminalization of homelessness, homelessness, including potential incarceration of people in the Fulton County Jail for refusing to leave downtown encampments. So what's the solution? Well, eviction without stable housing is definitely not a solution. It is violence. Forced encampment clearings are inhumane and ineffective. Displacing people, destroying their belongings, sending them to temporary shelters that feel unsafe or dehumanizing only deepens trauma. Providing stable housing with services is far cheaper than endlessly cycling people through forced evictions, temporary shelters, emergency rooms, only to be pushed back onto the streets. Guaranteed permanent housing with wraparound services in place such as meals, transportation, mental health care, addiction support, employment assistance and case management must be secured before any relocation. Second, long-term dedicated funding is needed to provide permanent housing and comprehensive wraparound services for the Old Wheat Street residents and the thousands of people still struggling to survive on the streets. Third, it is important for agencies such as the Partners for Home to partner with the homeless, to work collaboratively with advocacy organizations like the Justice for Cornelius Taylor Coalition and engage directly with those experiencing homelessness. Homeless individuals must be part of the decision-making process. Effective solutions are built with people, not for them. The memory of Cornelius Taylor and the needs of thousands still unhoused, housed, demand a compassionate, humane and sustained housing-first response, not a temporary fix driven by the glare of international attention. Addressing homelessness shouldn't require a global sports event to generate urgency and political will. Thank you. Addressing homelessness shouldn't require a global sports event to generate urgency and political will. Thank you.
Next is Kat Leatherwood.
My name is Kat Leatherwood. I am a resident in East Atlanta and I am a proud member of the Justice for Cornelius Taylor Coalition. I've also been a proud member of the People's Campaign to Stop Cop City. And I wanted to say that out loud, just to make, just to remind y'all that we're still here. That is how I became a part of the Coalition for Cornelius Taylor. And I think through those issues and this current issue, I've become very tired of broken promises. And that's assuming that these promises were even sincere in the first place, which I have my doubts. You promised a referendum on Cop City. Those signatures are collecting dust. It's direct democracy sitting in a dark room. You promised the training facility would make Atlanta police officers and policing safer. And yet I see Valerie Anderson here requesting that the man who murdered her son not work for the city of Atlanta. Got a paid year's vacation. It's, it's insane. And after Cornelius Taylor was crushed to death by a bulldozer, as a wise man says, driven by the policies of this city, there were promises made to the people who lived in that encampment. And those promises are not being met. They are not getting the wraparound services they were promised. When we showed up, the beds were not available. It's, you know, I know that we keep getting told it's hard. But I see us building a $1 billion jail. No problem. Atlanta Police Foundation needs $30 million. You will ignore 17 hours of public comment to make it happen. So I would just ask that as we remind y'all to follow through on what's promised to the actual citizens, not people visiting for a couple of weeks for the World Cup, people who live here, to make sure that we have housing, that the promises for the wraparound services for the residents of Old Wheat Street are brought through, are, you know, brought to fruition, that they get food and they get access, and that we rename Old Wheat Street Cornelius Taylor Street. Thank you.
Next is Chioki Perry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Chioki Perry, now voting, Council District One. Real simple. 1996, I was youthful. 33 years old. Fast forward, 2026, I still feel that youthful vibration. I'll be 63 when 2026 rolls around for that World Party. So it's nothing we hadn't lived through or seen, huh? I'm often reminded walking through a farly popular district, popular district. Atlanta's not perfect. However, Atlanta's been the perfect home for me. So I've enjoyed everything that actually happened here today and it's been stated. But I need you to take heed or take note to the feelings of our youth. Because since 1863, four years before Morehouse opened its doors and America's other favorite HBCU, you know, there was a youth movement and then subsequent other youth movements. So the word I like to describe or use is tsunami. You're at the brink of a youthful tsunami. Why? Because seemingly there's a choice. You won't partner with youth, you won't partner with all of those who need to have their human dignity and respect adhered to. And you simply choose to partner with some of the most cruellest, inhumane people that's been birthed in this millennium. Shame it, Atlanta.
Next is Latrice Chaney.
Good afternoon to everyone in the room. I am Latrice Chaney and not only am I here as an organizer, a tenant organizer with Housing Justice League, I'm here as a long-term resident of Atlanta, Georgia. My family and I was displaced five years ago out of the Forest Cove, which is known as the Four Seasons to long-term residents in Atlanta. And I'm here also with the Cornelius Taylor Coalition as to, in support of wraparound services and permanent housing for our homelessness, you know, our homeless residents in downtown Atlanta. Please stop, please stop wasting tax dollars money by locking up the residents for being homeless. I'm also charging you each district to, in support of rent stabilization. That was the form of what me and my family was displaced out of, as well as, you know, millennia coming in promising that they would not displace our families, but yet 500 more families about to be put on the street. I'm in support of rent stabilization. I'm in support of stop decriminal, stop criminalizing and locking up homelessness. I'm in support of state bill, the Housing Act, like just making sure that our homes are safe for our families to live in. As well as if we're gonna be charged rent based on our income, not the rising rents of the housing market. It's just unfair. And you also need to raise our labor wages as well. Thank you.
Next is Margie MacLeod.
Love of money. Reason why I'm here. Mayor Jackson, 1974 to 1982. We had one city. Mayor, you talking about two cities. What I'm saying, shame on you. Took two years, two years, homeless. Children taken away from them and put them in foster care because rent going up. But you had the TAD money. Hey, TAD money. And now you're gonna say you got 15,000 billion? The TAD? Why you gonna do this now when you had the money all the time? You had TAD money. You could have stopped all this homelessness. You could have stopped people freezing to death. People had died out there, Mayor. I've been out there. And I know Justice Lee been out here also. But now, the World Cup, election time, TAD. People, city council, tell your district what the TAD money is all about. They just got here. You ain't just sustaining. I'm glad you sustaining the TAD money to Southwest because Southwest ain't have no business looking like this. Because I love Mayor Jackson. Because we have one city, we didn't have two cities. So I say, I want a task force on TAD. We need to monitor that 15,000 billion dollars. We need to monitor to see where it's going at. Because the best Atlanta and all the development, and next thing we know, we'll be broke. So TAD money, always. Two years. It took you two years that you're gonna say you're gonna stand. You had the money all the time. That's why I say the love of money is what? Love of money is not about the people, it's about the money. And that's what I say, Ms. Margie, been coming out here for two years. You have to put the cap on the rent. You ran on that bill. So please, I know you have to do it at the Capitol, but we got to do what? We gotta do better what y'all doing, not just because election time come, the World Cup. Oh, I'm sustaining the TAD money on Southwest side. You had the money all the time.
Next up is Damian Harper.
Good evening, council members. Good evening to you. We the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and ensure tranquility to ourselves and our prosperity. That is the beginning of this Constitution of the United States. And if you forget, I'm sure the coalition today is going to remind you that on January 16th, a man was killed. That man's name was Cornelius Taylor. And Cornelius was homeless. Why? Not because he had a problem. Because you have a problem. Because it is incredibly, incredibly hard to economically exist in this city. Yet, the human spirit is determined and attached to life and the love which life brings. Despite the worst conditions, Cornelius chose life, only to be killed not by his peers, not even by hate, but by the state, by the city, because you have a problem. This city killed the citizen, not a death row inmate. It whittled a woman and removed her rock of emotion, support, and love because you have a problem. This civil framework this city has in place should be designed to help us prosper and pursue happiness. But that framework failed him not once, but twice. First, it paved over his road to opportunity. Next, it paved over him and his only housing with a bulldozer. This city owes human dignity to Cornelius. The reason I don't wear a watch, it's because the time is and always will be right now. Thank you so much, council.
Next, next up is Sandra Lee Williams.
Good afternoon, honorable council members. I am Sandra Lee Williams, president of the Atlanta North Georgia Labor Council. And along with me, there are several of our labor members. But I'm here today to request support for the WNBA team, the Atlanta Dream. They are currently our team. They made it to the playoffs and these players know their value. We see them every night. They are a product. We buy tickets, we buy jerseys, we tune in to see them, to watch the best talent on the planet leave everything that they have on the court. But the WNBA, the league, doesn't seem to understand their value. They're dragging their feet on a new collective bargaining agreement and dismissing or silencing calls for real and deserved change. Higher salaries based on growth of the business and professional standards and working conditions and real, real investment in the future and legacy of the women that play on that team. It's time for leadership to meet this moment. The league can show it understands the value of the players by committing to a transformative collective bargaining agreement, one that pays players what they deserve and invest in what actually grows this league and protects our health and safety. While the season is over, the negotiations are not. I'm asking for your support today and for you to protect the future of women's basketball, particularly in our great city of Atlanta. Please join me in the support of the Atlanta Dream Team. Thank you.
Next is Willie Jackson. Due to allocated time, you'll have four minutes.
Hello, everyone. I'm Willie Jackson. I'm a resident at the Welcome House and I'm a member of the Cornelius Taylor Coalition. I stand here today to ask each and every one of you, listen to our voices, help us with the wraparound service, hold accountability to your word, keep us going strong, keep the city going strong, help those in need and help myself as well because I'm one of those that is in need. And we hope that, and I hope, that everybody stick to their word, everybody. There is encampments, those that's not encampment, just sleep on the side of the curb, sleep in a hole somewhere. We try to help them just the way that someone helped myself. And I hope all of us, as we people, can be the people to help the people in the struggle here in Atlanta. And I thank you very much. Thank you.
Next is Reverend Washington.
Somebody's document here. After being approved to open a funeral home by the Homeland Security and the FDLE, after four different sheriff deputies, excuse me, four different sheriffs of metropolitan Atlanta, on many different occasions, along with the Lieutenant Governor of Georgia and Hillary Clinton of the, the former First Lady of the United States, all interacted with me. It brought to mind something that someone said, why is the harassment of APD after you? Well, I brought to mind this. The reverse psychology and the reverse roles of fabrication commanders of APD to only make me the assailant and lies to the public after David Holloman of the Atlanta Police Department, who made inconsistent statements to the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, who sustained my complaint for false imprisonment and excessive force by and through attempted murder. By and through, by and through the false imprisonment and excessive force, it was reminded of me, city council members, that after understanding that the late Malcolm X, who made this statement to black America, black America understand this assertion, that the Constitution of these United States, or in this case, the Atlanta Police Department, is still dehumanizing people of color that only sees us as three-fifths of a man. I'm viewed as still as a plantation from running from the master. The truth be told, the reason why the Atlanta Police Department have been after me is because of lies, fabrication, and slander. In the law, it says slander, defamation, and libel. Thank you.
Next is Devin Franklin. Due to allocated time, he has six minutes.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, council. My name, for those who are not aware, is Devin Franklin. I am senior movement policy counsel for the Southern Center for Human Rights. Certainly came here today to speak to certain issues, but a few things have caught my attention that I feel the need to kind of work into what I came to say. And honestly, it's rare that I have the opportunity to show the connection between so many of the things that I come before this body to advocate for. First things first, to the coalition that is here in support of Cornelius Taylor, I stand with you all. I'm grateful for their continued advocacy and holding his name high and continuing to try to hold the city of Atlanta accountable for its death. I am reminded, however, by one of the requests that the coalition has made for the city to truly fund wraparound services, that when I first came before this body, in my, when I first came to the Southern Center for Human Rights, I spoke to you all about a policing violence project and a number of recommendations that we submitted to you all about how to make policing safer in the city of Atlanta and how to ensure that those in need are able to reach those things. And one of those recommendations of the seven was in fact to provide wraparound services for individuals who were experiencing homelessness. I'm also reminded, again, this policing violence project that I first worked on when I I'm also reminded, again, this policing violence project that I first worked on when I first got to Southern Center, Ms. Boone, when you were giving the honor to the folks from Morehouse today for their work with incarcerated people, being able to take, get college degrees, you made a comment, incarceration is not an equal opportunity punishment, given that black Americans are arrested at more than five times the rates of white Americans. I'm not sure if anyone in this room is aware, but the city of Atlanta actually exceeds that rate in a horrible way. According to the police scorecard, the city of Atlanta arrests more people for low-level nonviolent offenses than 85% of police departments in the United States of America. And of those low-level nonviolent offenses, black folks in Atlanta are 8.9 times more likely to be arrested for low-level nonviolent offenses. All of that is relevant because the thing that I really came here to speak to you all today is about the Fulton County Jail, the lease of ACDC that you all have consented to, and the impact of overcrowding, which of course is fueled by disparate policing, overpolicing, overincarceration for low-level nonviolent offenses. Quote, "We met with him, and I just felt negligence from him. He wasn't sincere. He wasn't sad, he wasn't sorry." Those are the words of Tyron Barney. She is the sister of Tiriana Ledbetter. Tiriana Ledbetter was a 20-year-old woman who was, who is now currently on life support at Grady Hospital after being the victim of an assault by a woman with whom she was sailed with at the Fulton County Jail. The quote that I read to you from Ms. Barney is her thoughts about Fulton County Sheriff, your business partner, Patrick Labott, after he came to the Fulton, came to the jail to meet with the, I'm sorry, to the hospital to meet with the family after Ms. Ledbetter had been placed on life support. We know that in November of 2024, the United States Department of Justice published a scathing report after a 16-month investigation into the Fulton County Jail, and that that 97-page report detailed to authorities that the jail failed to protect people incarcerated against violence from other incarcerated people. What we also know is that Ms. Ledbetter particularly had cognitive disabilities and mental health issues and that she read on likely a sixth-grade level. That's what's stated by her mother. We know that she had at least three court dates prior to her injuries, and that they were reset because her court-appointed attorney did not show. We know that the woman with whom she is accused of being injured by, that that woman is currently charged, was originally charged with shoplifting and drug possession. Divertible charges where she would not have been in custody had proper use of the diversion center or pad been made use. What I'm saying to you is there are avoidable consequences to the actions that you all take. We know from the, what's been published, that Ms. Ledbetter was found unconscious and stuffed underneath a bed at the Fulton County Jail, and that her cellmate had effectively been able to trick the deputies into thinking that Ms. Ledbetter was okay because she came to the door and answered for her. That's not proper supervision. That is who you all are tasked with taking over your building. We know that Ms. Ledbetter was in an observation unit because of her mental health condition, and that she was in a mental health observation unit alongside another person in a cell that only had one bed. That is not just, that is not safe, that is not competent supervision by someone who's tasked with such. We understand that the assault happened on September 22nd, and that the mother wasn't notified until September 25th. We know that there is video surveillance that suggests that the fight had occurred, the fight that injured her had occurred several months before, I mean, several hours before. And so that, again, the lack of supervision, not the condition of the building, not the decrepit walls, but the fact that you don't have caretakers who value the lives of those who are in custody, that they were not able to keep this woman safe, is what is being met here. So, I'm going to wrap up today, but I do want you to know that there is still a resolution that is pending before the Public Safety Committee. Resolution 25R 3289 that calls for the state's withdrawal of Fulton County from the Atlanta City Detention Center. This is something that you all should have voted on a long time ago. I'm asking that at the next Public Safety Committee to be held next week, that you go ahead and hold that vote, because I will be back here on the 20th to ask that this full council make a vote on it regardless, regardless of whatever the recommendation is, because the time is now for you all to divorce yourselves from the corruptness that is Fulton County. Thank you.
Next is Allen Hall. Due to allocated time, you'll have 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Allen Hall. I am a survivor from the Old Wheat Street Homeless Encampment. I am here today to speak to you on behalf of Cornelius Taylor, who was tragically killed on January 16th by a city employee who drove a front loader truck weighing five tons to the Old Wheat Street Homeless Encampment and into the tent where Cornelius Taylor was sleeping, crushing him to death. Cornelius was asleep, unaware of what was unfolding. It was only after people started screaming that the front loader truck stopped moving, but it was too late. The autopsy report released 10 days later found he had died of blunt force trauma. His spleen and his liver had been lacerated, his pelvis cracked in half. And Alanae Andrew Dickens and other city officials did not respond to the request for comment. The Old Wheat Street Homeless survivors to this day still grieve and carry the trauma of the loss of Cornelius, who was a friend, a neighbor, and a family member to us. After Cornelius' death, the city made promises but did not follow through. We are calling on the city of Atlanta to change its approach to, to encampment evictions. Policies that focus on getting homeless people out of sight is not a solution. It's violence. What killed Cornelius Taylor was not a guy driving a front loader, it was years of bad policy driving that thing. We called on the city of Atlanta to take a humane approach. Housing first has been proved to be the most effective approach to homelessness with wraparound services, so homeless people can build a path to long-term stability and dignity. Cornelius Taylor's life mattered. What happened to Cornelius Taylor must never happen again.
Next is Tim Franson.
Hey, y'all.
Sorry, Mr. Franson, just one second.
Sorry.
Councilmember Bakhtiari wanted to respond.
I wanted to.
I apologize.
Sorry, sorry, Tim. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Hall, for coming up and speaking, and I, but I did want to say one thing. I don't want people here thinking the city didn't do anything. Like, I understand, I am part of a system, and we get grouped together. I was at that vigil. I was out there the next day. I spoke. I sat with the family. I held up Cornelius' photo and was punished for it. And so, like, I don't want you to think that there's nobody here that cares. That's why I fought so hard to start a case manager program, because I believe in wraparound services, and I've known that corridor since I was a baby. But I don't want you to think that there's no one up here that cares or that council didn't respond, because I did. I did. And so, I just want you all to know, because you're hearing about all the things we've done wrong, we have tons of stuff to improve on, right? The system is not broken, it's not designed to help people, it's designed for asset protection. That's real. But I don't want you to think for one minute that there was nobody up here that didn't care. And our, our actions were, I cannot speak in, I cannot speak in defense of any of it. You are 1,000% correct, and I thank you so much for coming down here and telling us what you had going on and for living on that street and for sharing. Thank you. But I don't want any of you to think for two seconds that there was nobody up here that cared. So, I just, I just really needed to say that.
I think, council member, I'm sorry again, Mr. Franson, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so, Tim, my name's Tim Franson. I want to make sure that folks get a copy of this petition that has been developed with a lot of the residents from Old Wheat Street. Here I have the copy, which I'll set right here, is enough for everybody to have one. And then, this is the actual signature count, which actually, as we've been sitting in here, there's been an additional 400 or 500 people that have signed this online petition. And this really spells out. Thank you to those people. I think y'all should sign it, too. And, you know, Lili, Councilperson Bakhtiari, I hear you.
Tim, you've known me since I was 18 years old.
Yeah, I know. And, and I know a lot of y'all up here. I know Councilperson Bond. At one point, when I was a young man, your office reached out to movement I was involved with and really wanted to, to help out. I always appreciate that. Councilperson Boone, when Vincent Fort was laid to rest, you held my hand walking in to view his body, and that was just, meant a lot to me. Councilperson Dozier, we've fought in the, you know, around issues before you were, before you decided to run. And so, I don't look at y'all as just a bunch of random people that I came here to yell at. I know that before, you're council people, you're human beings, you, your husbands, your, your, you know, parents, and, but I'm telling you today that a lot of the promises that were made to, to me, looking eye to eye with city workers, have been broken. And folks are not getting the services that they were promised. We were forced to move on this unrealistic timeline and move people into a place where there was no case management. Now they have a case manager, but they're still not being fed. And so, I'm asking you to take these demands seriously. Y'all know my number, let's fix this. I know we can do it together. Thank you.
Next is Matthew Nursey.
All right. Thank you, council. My name is Matthew Nursey. I'm an organizer with the Housing Justice League. First thing I want to say is, we're going to be honoring Delta. You know, there are flight attendants and ramp workers that are currently trying to unionize at Delta, and they're being union busted against, so you all can speak out in support of those workers anytime. So, I'm here today for the Justice for Cornelius Taylor Coalition. The Housing Justice League has been working with the community on a nine-point policy platform. Thank you to the council members who have reached out, Councilmember Emos, Bakhtiari, Dozier. So, thank you to the ones who have reached out with interest on the package. So, let's just walk through a little bit of what we've had to deal with in trying to get the, the mayor's office and the city to do the right thing on Old Wheat Street. So, the first thing is, you know, getting them to stop the sweeps and start a task force, which, by the way, the task force was a complete joke. Partners for Home and, you know, people who rely on Partners for Home were in complete control of the, of what was discussed and, you know, what, what was allowed to be envisioned in those spaces. You know, the sweeps never really happened. They broke the moratorium. They kept sweeping Prior Street even before the task force was done ending. You know, we try to get folks housed. They said, the city says they don't have anywhere to house folks. Bullcrap. I mean, that is not on us, that's your job. Y'all get the reports, the numbers, the mayor knows. We need at least 80,000 units by 2030 to even put a dent in the housing gap. The 20,000 is not enough. And, you know, like, you're spending, it's been said before, you're spending a third of the budget on police. We have money. We need a city that will stand up, and a mayor that will stand up for, you know, the unhoused and renters and the working class while that, the federal funding and the state funding is being taken away from us. We need you to step in. The wraparound services have not been delivered. Transportation, healthcare, food, job training and placement, this is all stuff that the city can help with. And thank you to the council people who have helped. This is more directed towards the mayor and the city and his staff. Thank you.
Next up is Jonathan Hawley.
Good afternoon. If you made a mistake that resulted in someone's death, what would it take for you to clear your conscience? For most, no outpouring of sorrow nor compassion could ever be enough. Death weighs heavily on the human soul. The city government must grow a conscience because it has taken Cornelius Taylor's life. You owe a moral debt to his loved ones, especially and specifically his fiancee, Lolita Griffith, who is here in the audience today. She is watching your response to these demands. First, fund the programs and the continuum of care. The conditions in Welcome House are not hygienic and not safe. Housing without funding is not enough. Many of you already know this and have already spoken up about it in response to previous comments, and I thank those of you who are our allies in this. Second, commit to stopping all homeless sweeps. The World Cup is not worth another person's death. Obviously. And third, lest future citizens and future governments forget this shameful chapter in our city's story, rename Old Wheat Street to Cornelius Taylor Street. And don't you dare do that third one without the first two. We will hold a vigil on Old Wheat Street this Wednesday, October 8th, at 7:00 PM, to remember Cornelius Taylor on what would have been his birthday. No, thank you, I'm not finished yet. Everyone in this audience is invited to our vigil. I'll say it again, October 8th, 7:00 PM, on Old Wheat Street, the site of his death. I appeal to each of your human consciousness, consciences. Do not let Cornelius Taylor die in vain. Thank you.
Next is Ari Parker.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ari Parker. I'm actually here in support of the Coalition for Cornelius Taylor. I'm just here to speak from the heart, honestly. Like, I had nothing written down in preparation. But I am part of the community here in the 3rd District, and I do a lot of volunteer work, which is feeding homeless people or helping with whatever advocacy I can help with, or just helping my community however I can. But as I do that help, I see a lot of people, including people from my own personal community, which I lay in an intersection of communities. Not only am I black, I'm indigenous, not only that, I'm queer, and I'm trans. It's hard to stomach when I see people that I call my friends end up on the streets. And some of my friends were part of Wheat Street. I didn't really know this until the sweep happened and started seeing them turn up. What happened to Cornelius Taylor could have very well been one of my friends, one of our friends, some of your family members, and it could have been me, because at one point in my life, when I was only 18 years old, for a very short amount of time, I was homeless. I had nowhere to go, no friends or family around until I came to Georgia. And Georgia's been my home, and just like everyone else in this room, it's their home. But I would love to see sweeps stop. I would love to see wraparound services continue. I would like to see more opportunities for people to be fed and feel safe and have somewhere to be that's not places that are only temporary. And just the final thing, on my way here, I was thinking about what is the insignia of Atlanta, which is, is phoenix. Phoenixes live and they die out and come back again. And that flame isn't just the bird, it's all of us, and no flame is irrelevant. And as my mom used to say, no person is above any other person, and no flame is more important than another flame. And we should all shine and burn together and stop making one person's wants and needs more important than the needs of many.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Atlanta brands herself as the spiritual home of America's civil rights movement and an international city that proudly embraces the motto, "The city too busy to hate." Yet, even as Atlanta champions these values, questions arise about whether it is adequately vetting official associations or potentially partnering with hate groups. Twice in the past two years, Atlanta's mayor headlined events hosted with an outfit called C-. Kona, suggesting official partnership. Does association with groups at odds with Atlanta's civil rights legacy truly fit the city's values? Georgetown University reports that Kona is a Hindu right-wing advocacy organization known for targeting critics of Hindu nationalism and those who highlight the persecution of religious minorities, especially Muslims and Christians in India. Kona's endorsement of such actions is evident in statements by its speakers and leaders. For example, the group hosts hate speakers like Mahatma Kishwar, who brazenly calls Islam a barbaric ideology that threatens the survival of the human race. While Kona's Director of Government Relations has unapologetically labeled Islam as hate and bigotry and insisted that the largest Indian-American Muslim advocacy group must be eliminated. Kona consistently collaborates with other American Hindu nationalist groups like the HSS, the HBA and HIF, all of which promote the hardline Hindutva policies of India's ruling party. Rutgers explains Hindutva is a transnational far-right ideology which is rooted in Hindu supremacy, undermines pluralism, and encourages hate and violence against Christians, Muslims, Sikhs and other minorities. Providing a platform to these networks is a slap in the face to Indian-American minorities as well as to critics of majoritarianism and supremacy. Atlanta stands on two core moral principles. Dr. King's belief that injustice anywhere threatens justice everywhere and Congressman Lewis's call to get into good trouble for what is right. Guided by these principles, Atlanta should champion interfaith engagement and free speech. But following Lewis's example, we must also clearly condemn racist, bigoted or hateful speech. Therefore, city leaders should publicly disavow groups identified as promoting supremacist ideology. The city of Atlanta must end partnerships with U.S.-based Hindu nationalist organizations who promote exclusionary ideologies. Instead, seek to partner with Hindu and South Asian groups who support equality, religious freedom and dissent. Uphold Atlanta's civil rights legacy by practicing policies that embrace pluralism and not by associating with Hindutva advocates who represent everything that the heroes of the civil rights movement fought against. And have a report on this issue for every member of the council. Thank you.
That does conclude the public comment section of our agenda today. I'd like to thank members of the public who provided comments to council. We'll now move on to the report of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Members of council, I, Corinne Lindo, municipal clerk of the City of Atlanta, do hereby certify for the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, September 15, 2025, where true and correct.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved by Councilmember Juan, second by Councilmember Westmoreland. We can adopt this by unanimous consent. Madam Clerk.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. Will the journals approve? We'll move on to communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President Protem, if I may take items one and two as a block.
Please proceed.
Number one is 25C0114. This is a communication from Andrea Welcher, Ph.D., Director of General Education at Morehouse College, accepting service to the City of Atlanta Reparations Study Commission. Item number two is 25C0115. This is a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Katie Mola to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years. For both these items, staff recommendation to refer to Community Development Human Services Committee and Committee on Counsel.
Glad to follow that course.
Item number three is 25C0116. This is a communication from municipal clerk, Corinne Lindo, submitting a report of administrative corrections made to previously adopted legislation between the regular council meeting dates of September 15, 2025, and October 6, 2025, to the Atlanta City Council in accordance with Section 2-275 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinance. This includes 25O1448, 25O1483, 25R3525, and 25O1174. Staff recommendation to accept and file.
Glad to follow that course.
Mr. President Protem, if I may make a few announcements about the upcoming election?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to remind everyone that today, October 6th, is the last day to register to vote or make changes to your voter registration. As long as it's postmarked today, you should be fine. Also, early voting for the November 4th municipal election will begin next Tuesday, October 14th, through Friday, October 31st. The polling locations will be open Friday, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. On Saturdays, October 18th and the 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. On Sundays, October 19th and 26th, from 12:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. There will also be a special election for Senate District 35. This will be held on Tuesday, November 18th. And early voting for this race will be held on October 27th through November 14th. You can find all these polling locations on the city clerk's website as well as the times the polls are open. I do remind everyone to please, there were, due to the city's redistricting, there may be some poll changes. Fulton County has mailed out updated voter registration cards to everyone, but we do remind you to please verify your voter information by visiting myvoterpage.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now moving on to consideration of veto legislation.
Mr. Chair, I also wanted, when she was talking about elections, just to provide an update that just happened a few minutes while we were in session.
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
The qualifications challenges to the two candidates were upheld by the court, and the ballots will reflect, will not reflect the names for either Keith Lewis or Sherri Williams.
Thank you for those updates. Moving on to consideration of veto legislation. Madam Clerk, is there any veto legislation?
There are none.
Madam Clerk, is there any unfinished business?
There are none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone have any items they need to remove from the consent agenda? Councilmember Winston.
Yes, I have two items to remove from the consent agenda on page eight, items two and three, which is 25-R3899 and 25-R3901.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other items to remove from the consent agenda? Move approval of consent agenda, section one, by Councilmember Juan. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote. On consent agenda, section one.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, that's 12 yeas, zero nays.
12 yeas, zero nays. Consent agenda, section one is approved. Any items removed from consent agenda, section two? I'll undertake a motion to approve. Councilmember Juan with a motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion to refer, sorry. Is there a second? Councilmember Dozier with a second. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Collins, what is your vote? The votes closed, 11 yeas, zero nays.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. Consent agenda, section two is approved, referred. But Councilmember Westmoreland, we're doing committees a little differently today. So I was, I was gonna, I was going to let everyone know, in addition to the announcement I made at the beginning of the meeting, where we're going to take Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee and Transportation Committee in committee of the whole. City Utilities Committee also has items that need to be dealt with in committee of the whole. So we're going to do that last in committee of the whole. But to start, we're going to do Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. Councilmember Chairwoman Boone. And we'll need to enter in committee of the whole, if you want to make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. In order to conduct our legislative business, we will need to enter into the committee of the whole. I will make that motion. Second by the Honorable Jason Dozier. Please open the vote.
Motion by Councilmember Boone, second by Councilmember Dozier. Please open that vote.
The vote is open. Ms. Norwood, what is your vote? The vote is closed, 13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas, zero nays. We are now in committee of the whole. Councilwoman, Chairwoman Boone.
I would like to acknowledge Mr. Terry Ross, who is here today. Will you please come forward to address us about his reappointment to the License Review Board? Thank you, Mr. Ross. Will you tell us a little bit about why you would like to continue this very important assignment?
Absolutely.
And before he, Mr. Ross, I'm sorry, would you go ahead and read the legislation before he makes his statement?
A communication by Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Mr. Terry Ross to serve as a member of the License Review Board. This appointment is for a term of two years.
All right, Ms. Ross.
Yeah, my name is Terry Ross, and I'm a resident of West End. My councilmember, Jason Dozier, and I know some of the other councilmembers as well, whether we were in agreement or bumping heads. But anyway, it's good to see everyone, and it's great to be seen. Yes, I'd like to serve again on the License Review Board. I've been there since 2020. The work came to me as I was chair of Neighborhood Planting Unit T. And we had some bad actors who had some alcohol licenses and needed to be dealt with, and I felt like the work could be dealt with if I sat on the License Review Board. As a matter of fact, Councilman Amos, you were on the board when I first came on. That's right. And, and you were my Board of Education representative at the time. You know, we're entwined here, y'all. But anyway, it's, this work is important to me. And I sit with passionate residents of the City of Atlanta on this board, and, you know, we, we take things head-on when it comes to underage drinking, when it comes to nightclubs being open after hours and exposing young people to overindulging in the things that can happen when that thing, those kind of things go on. And so this is our way to combat this and try to make Atlanta a better city for everyone.
Questioned the Honorable Alex Juan, followed by Byron D. Amos and Antonio Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am in full support of your appointment. I want to appreciate the times that I've watched the License Review Board proceedings. I appreciate you are often the sole lone voice for the community in representing the frustration sometimes and articulating the challenges that we do experience from bad actors. So I, with your reappointment, I hope you will continue in that vein and continue to support the city APD license and permits when they do bring do-cause actions before violators. I mean, there's no other way to put it. But again, I just wanted to thank you for your voice.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan. That means a lot to me. And I've said it before publicly, I am unapologetically pro-community, but I'm fair in it also. So business does not have to be fearful of me.
Councilmember Amos.
Yeah, just very quickly, want to just say kudos to you for continuously wanting to serve. And also just to support what my colleague has already said, you have been that calm voice, sturdy, steady for the community, but also understanding our business, community as well. So just thank you. And also bringing up the fact we've been on this road together, as you seek another term, I am too. So hopefully we get the same blessing.
There you go. Thank you, Councilman Amos, yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Just the same thing, congratulations. We support you, but I know, want to make sure we're moving forward that we are also, because I heard you say you talked about a lot of bad actors that were in your community. But I think we have a lot of folks that lack information in our communities, too.
Okay.
And so I want to make sure that we are informing folks about how they could get better rather than just making sure they're bad actors. Because we know a lot of folks, they need the information of the new laws that have changed, and it will probably make them better community people if we give them the information instead of...
Absolutely. I agree 100%. You know, one of my achievements here with the city is the design and implementation of the Atlanta Community Engagement Playbook. And it's basically a crash course on how to up the civic engagement game. And so those kind of things make a difference.
Yes, sir.
If you don't know, you don't know, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has there been a motion to approve by Councilmember Amos? And a second by Councilmember Juan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, that's 13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas, zero nays. Thank you, Mr. Ross. This will go to the Committee on Counsel, but you will not need to reappear in front of that committee nor the full council.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councilmembers.
Be in touch with you. Councilwoman Boone.
Can we have a motion to, thank you, Mr. Ross. We will next take action on our claims. Can we have a motion to approve the favorable claims?
Motion by Councilmember Lewis, second by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote on the favorable recommendations on claims.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? One moment. Ms. Norwood, what is your vote? Councilmember Collins, what is your vote? The votes closed, that's 13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas, zero nays. Those items are approved. Councilmember Boone.
Can we have a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims?
So moved, so moved by Councilmember Juan, second by Councilmember Bakhtiari on the adverse of the unfavorable claims. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Mr. Westmoreland, what is your vote?
Aye.
13 yeas, zero nays.
13 yeas and zero nays. Those items are adverse.
Mr. President Protem, this brings us to our ordinances for first read. Item 125-0-1537, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to accept on behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, a donation from the Atlanta Urban Area Security Initiative of 1/2024 Ford F-650, valued at approximately $121,087.21 to be accepted as of December 13, 2024, for special operations usage within the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department and for other purposes. Item 225-0-1538, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee amending the 2025 Intergovernmental Grant Fund Budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations in the amount of $8,290.0 on behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department for the purpose of funding the trauma-related equipment grant program developed by the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department and for other purposes. Mr. Protem, this brings us to our ordinance for second reading. Ordinance for second reading, first item, 25-0151. reading, first item 25-01516, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to waive Section 2-783 H1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to authorize a settlement of all claims against the defendants in the case of Paul Marie and Collins McGee, E.T. Civil Action File Number 22E V00239 pending in the State Court of Fulton County in the amount of $20,000.0. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from 1001 General Fund Center Number 200101, non-departmental account 5212005, litigation expenses and functional activity number 1512000, accounting and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
Chairwoman Boone, if you, these are all claims, so if we could take items three through 11 together, that would save us quite a bit of time.
Item 425-01525, an ordinance by Councilmember Andre L. Boone authorizing the city attorney or her designate to execute a settlement statement on behalf of the City of Atlanta to resolve claims against... Okay. So, item three through...
Three and four will be taken together, given they were separate, their ordinances.
Three and four, okay. Item 425-0-1525, an ordinance by Councilmember Andre L. Boone authorizing the city attorney or her designate to execute a settlement on behalf of the City of Atlanta to resolve claims against Profilo and Profilo KYL and Sylphonic Asset Manufacturer 3M Company in the amount of $1,452,768.03 and for other purposes.
Right, sir. Motion to approve those two items. Motion by Councilmember Bakhtiari, second by Councilmember Wan. Please prepare the vote on items three and four.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays. Those items are approved. And again, Chairwoman Boone, if we can now take the resolutions, items five through 11 together, please.
Resolutions, a resolution by Public, number of item five, 25-R-3963, item five, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Elon Tishon and Yona Point, LLC versus City of Atlanta ETAO Civil Action File Number 24CV008199 pending in the Superior Court of Fulton County in the amount of $90,000.0. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid as follows, $45,000.0. From 1001 General Fund Center Number 200101, non-departmental account 5212005, litigation expenses and functional activity number 1512000, accounting and $45,000.0. From 5051 Water and Wastewater Revenue Fund 200301, NDP, unallocated citywide employee expenses 5212005, litigation expenses and 154000, human resources and for other purposes. Item six, a resolution 25-R-3964, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Christina Stewart versus City of Atlanta ETAO Civil Action File Number 23E V0024101 pending in the State Court of Fulton County in the amount of $17,500.0. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from 5051 Water and Wastewater Revenue Fund 200301, NDP, unallocated citywide employee expenses 5212005, litigation expenses and 154000, human resources and for other purposes. Item seven, 25-R-3965, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Princess N. Roberts versus City of Atlanta ETAO Civil Action File Number 24E V000801 pending in the State Court of Fulton County in the amount of $75,000.0. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from 1001 General Fund Center Number 200101, non-departmental account 5212005, litigation expenses and functional activity number 1512000, accounting and for other purposes. Item eight, 25-R-3966, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta in the case of RUALINOBYV City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number 23E V00262 pending in the State Court of Fulton County in the amount of $14,500.0. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from 1001 General Fund Center Number 200101, non-departmental account 5212005, litigation expenses and for functional activity 1512000, accounting and for other purposes. Item nine, 25R-3967, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Stacy Newman versus City of Atlanta Action File Number 23E V002271 pending in the State Court of Fulton County, State of Georgia, in an amount of $200,000.0. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from 1001 General Fund Center Number 200101, non-departmental account 5212005, litigation expenses and functional activity number 1512000, accounting and for other purposes. Item 10, 25-R-3968, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company as Sue Brogie of Brenda Rogers versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number 24E V003393 pending in the State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $8,169.46. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from 1001 General Fund Center Number 200101, non-departmental account 5212005, litigation expenses and functional activity number 1512000, accounting and for other purposes. Item 11, 25-R-3969, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant Officer Lauren Parker in the case of Tony Stroud versus Officer Lauren Parker Civil Action File Number 25M STS234256 pending in the magistrate court of Fulton County in the amount of $800.0.0. The settlement amount, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from 1001 General Fund Center Number 200101, non-departmental account 5212005, litigation expenses and functional activity number 1512000, accounting and for other purposes.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone. Get you a drink of water. If someone would like to make a motion on items five through 11. So moved by Councilmember Wan, second by Councilmember Dozier. Please prepare the vote on those items.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays. Those items are approved.
Colleagues, we have one due or referred item comes to us from CDHS with a favorable recommendation. Item 12, 25-0-1473, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend Chapter 78 Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3 Fire Prevention and Fire Safety Standards, Section 78 through 57 amendments to require that all fire department connections be clearly labeled with the floor or area of the building they are connected to and for other purposes.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved by Councilmember Wan. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Collins. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays. That item is approved.
We have no items coming off of Hill today. Thus concludes our legislative business for today.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone. And again, we'll be staying in Committee of the Hole so we can have the Transportation Committee with Councilmember Amos. Chairman Amos.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. Since we're already in Committee of the Hole, there's a need for us to enter into public hearings. I make a motion to enter into public hearing.
Motion to enter into a public hearing by Chairman Amos, second by Councilmember Dozier. Please prepare the vote.
One moment. One moment. The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please, Councilmember McCollum, what is your vote?
It's a yay, it is not coming up, so I don't know what's happening.
The vote is closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays. We are now in the public hearing.
Thank you. Item number 25-O-1514, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to abandon and convey a portion of a public street known as Third Street consisting of 0.3443 acres line and between landlot 249 of the 17th District of Fulton County, Georgia, and being merely specifically described in the attached exhibit A to LWH Carey Park LLC, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute a claim deed for such an abandonment right away and for other documents necessary to effectuate the abandonment and for other purposes. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Wan, second by Chairman Amos. We can do this on a unanimous consent with no objection. Madam Clerk.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. We're now out of the public hearing. Chairman Amos.
Thank you. It takes us to our ordinance for second reading, 25-O. Okay, yeah, back up. We got to act on this item. In reference to 25-O-1514, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Amos, second by Councilmember Wan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays. That item is approved.
Thank you. Now it takes us to our ordinance for second reading, 25-O-1512, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the chief financial officer or his designate to amend the fiscal year 2026 general government capital outlay fund budget on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation by transferring impact fees fund to Arrow ATL Trail Segment Adams Park, Camerton Road to Cascade Heights Historic District in the amount not to exceed $250,000 for the purpose of completing preliminary engineering for the Arrow ATL Trail Segment Adams Park, Camerton Road to the Cascade Heights Historic District and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, who's second. Second by Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays. That item is approved.
Thank you, sir. 25-O-1513, an ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute all documents necessary for the acquisition of certain additional property interests necessary for the Monroe Drive Complete Street Project, authorizing negotiations with property owners for the acquisition of such property interests, authorizing title searches, appraisals, surveys, and other items necessary for the acquisition of such property interests, authorizing the mayor and the city attorney in the event negotiations are unsuccessful to institute condemnation procedures pursuant to the declaration of taking method, state code listed, waive inserting provisions in Article 10 Real Estate and Procurement Code for the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, all contracted work and payments for property interests to be paid from the account listed number listed herein and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Amos, second by Councilmember Wan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays. That item is approved.
25-O-1515, an ordinance by Transportation Committee to authorize the mayor or his designate to execute cooperative purchasing agreement listed Oracle License and Support Services utilizing State of Georgia contract number listed between the State of Georgia Technology Authority and Mystics Incorporated for Oracle License and Support Services on behalf of the Department of Aviation for the term of one year retroactively effective July 1, 2025 through June 30 of 2026 in an amount not to exceed $474,107.60 in accordance to Session 2-1606 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code for the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, all contract work shall be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, second by Councilmember Wan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, eleven yays, one abstention.
Eleven yays, zero nays, one abstention.
I work for Salesforce, so I'm abstaining from any purchasing agreements with Oracle.
Thank you, Councilmember Wykoff. That item is approved.
Takes us to our next item, 25-O-152. Takes us to our next item, twenty-five dash O dash one five two eight, to my understanding, there's a substitute to add the account number, so I make a motion to substitute.
Motion to substitute by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote on the substitute.
The vote is open. The votes closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, substitute is approved.
Thank you, for the record, it does not change the caption, so twenty-five dash O dash one five two eight, ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Carr Overstreet authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute amendment number four to agreement listed Cascade Road Avenue Treescape and Signal Installation with Matthew Kelly JV on behalf of the Department of Transportation to add funding for continued construction of the Cascade Road Complete Street Phase One in the amount not to exceed four million six hundred sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars to waive Chapter Two, Article Ten, Division Seven, Session Two, one two nine eight E and Chapter Two, Article Ten, Division Four, Session Two dash one one eight seven of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinance, all contract work to be charged to and paid from fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes, motion to approve.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, is there a second? Second by council member Westmoreland, please prepare the vote on the substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, that item is approved on substitute.
Next item, twenty-five dash O dash one five two nine, ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis authorizing abandonment of a portion of St. John Circle Southwest consisting approximately zero point two six one acres of being more specifically described in the attached exhibit A line and being in land lot ninety of the fourteenth District Fulton County, Georgia, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute a quitclaim deed for such abandonment right of way and other documents necessary to infatuate the abandonment to Fulton County City of Atlanta Land Bank Authority Incorporated during business as Metro Atlanta Land Bank, waiving certain provisions of the Code of Ordinance and for other purposes, motion to hold for public hearing.
Is this a hold?
Yes. Public hearing.
Held on committee, motion to hold by council member Amos, second by council member Juan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, thirteen yays, I mean, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, that item will be held on committee.
Thank you, next item is twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero four, you need to amend this item to add exhibit A, motion to amend.
Motion to amend by council member Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote on the amendment.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, amendment is approved.
Twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero four, resolution by Councilmember Marcy Carr Overstreet authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an intergovernmental lighting agreement with Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of assuming full responsibility and calls for compliance with the Georgia Utility Facility Protection Act and the operation, repair, and maintenance of the lighting system, including but not limited to damages, replacement of bulbs, balances, luminaries, structures, associated equipment, conduits, wiring, service equipment of the lighting system installed by the Georgia Department of Transportation as part of the State Route one fifty-four, State Route one sixty-six, from one eighty-five to I two eighty-five Lightning Project listed Fulton County as shown in exhibit A and for other purposes, motion to approve.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote to approve as amended.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Mr. Bond, what is your vote? Vote is closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, that item is approved.
Next item is twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero seven, Mr. President, Pro Tem, there's a need for a substitute that will change the caption, make a motion to substitute.
Motion to substitute by Chairman Amos, is there a second? Second by council member Westmoreland, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Boone, what is your vote?
Aye.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Resolution twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero seven, a resolution by councilmember Liliana Bactiari as is substituted by Transportation Committee authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to the Cabbage Town Initiative Community Development Corporation to restore and improve the Crogue Street Micro Mobility Hub, authorizing the chief financial officer to make the payment from the account number listed herein and for other purposes, motion to approve.
Motion to approve on substitute by Chairman Amos, second by councilmember Bactiari, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The votes closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, that item is approved on substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, Pro Tem, take items without objection, number nine and ten together.
Please proceed.
Thank you, twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero eight, a resolution by councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to amend concessions lease agreement listed concessions package two F one concourse B with Delaware North Companies Travel Hospitality, Inc. to incorporate the name change and for other purposes. Number ten, twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero nine, a resolution by councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to consent to and approve the assignment of concessions lease agreement listed concessions package two F one concourse B with the Travel Hospitality Services LLC to Arena Areas USA, Inc. and for other purposes, motion to approve items, motion to approve twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero eight and twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero nine.
Motion to approve those two items by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote. On items nine and ten.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, that's twelve yays, zero, councilmember Boone, what is your vote? She's got to, the votes closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, those two items are approved.
Item twenty-five dash R dash three nine one zero, a resolution by councilmember Howard Shook authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute an encroachment agreement with the Garn Hill Civic Association, Inc., authorizing permanent installation of a centennial post clock on and or in the traffic circle at Bowling Road Northwest, Pine Tree Drive Northeast, and Ransome Road Northeast right of way located adjacent to twenty-two fifty-seven Bowling Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three zero five, three hundred Bowling Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three zero five, two eighty Bowling Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh five, and two eighty-one Bowling Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh five, and for other purposes, motion to amend to add exhibit A.
Motion to amend by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote on the amendment.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? One moment. One moment. Eleven yays, zero nays.
Eleven yays, zero nays, amendment is approved.
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion approved as amended by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, that item is, this is the amendment or the?
Most amendment, amended item.
Approved as amended, twelve yays, zero nays.
Thank you, Mr. President, Pro Tem, without objection, take number twelve and thirteen together.
Please proceed.
Number twelve, twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero, sorry, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven for a resolution by Transportation Committee supplementing a joint task order fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount not to exceed seven million one hundred eighty thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars for use under eight architectural and engineering design services contracts for services at Harsfield-Jackson, Atlanta International Airport, all services will be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number thirteen, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven five, a resolution by Transportation Committee supplementing a joint task order fund in the amount not to exceed one million one hundred forty thousand for use under four small architectural and engineering design services contracts for contracts listed. There we go, Hope Consulting Company LLC and other contract listed DK Engineering Group, Inc. for services to be performed at Harsfield-Jackson, Atlanta International Airport, all services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes, motion to approve item twelve, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven four, and item thirteen, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven five.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, is there a second? Second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote on those two items.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, that's twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, those two items are approved.
Next item, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven six, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to amend contract listed concourse D welding construction management at risk at Harsfield-Jackson, Atlanta International Airport for Moody Holder Bryson Sovereign in joint venture increasing to, increasing the not to exceed amount to nine hundred sixty million dollars and to partially fund the construction phase of the concourse D South Pier in the amount of three hundred forty-five million dollars for services at Harsfield-Jackson, Atlanta International Airport, all services will be charged to and paid from the contract number listed herein and for other purposes, motion to approve.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, twelve yays, zero nays. Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, item is approved.
Item number fifteen, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven seven, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute a temporary right of way agreement with CSS Transportation, Inc. for the purpose of installing fence to fencing to minimize encampment under the CSS Railroad Crossing at Chester Bridge to authorize chief financial officer to remit payment to CSS Transportation in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand four hundred twenty dollars on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, all costs to be paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes, motion to approve.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, that item is approved.
Mr. President, Pro Tem, without objection, if I can take item number sixteen and eighteen together.
Please proceed.
Item number sixteen, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven eight, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an intergovernmental lighting agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of assuming full responsibility and calls for the compliance with the Georgia Utility Facility Protection Act and the operation, repair, and maintenance of the lighting system, including but not limited to damages, replacement of bulbs, balances, luminaries, structures, associated equipment, conduits, wiring, service equipment for the lighting system installed by the Georgia Department of Transportation as part of the State Route thirteen at Monroe Drive, project number listed as shown in exhibit A and for other purposes, motion to approve. Well, that got to get the other one, number eighteen, twenty-five dash R dash three nine eight zero, just for the record, withdraw my motion, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an intergovernmental lighting agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation on behalf of Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of assuming full responsibility and calls for the compliance with the Georgia Utility Faculty Protection Act and operations, repair, and maintenance of the lighting system, including but not limited to damages, replacement of lamps, balances, luminaries, structures, associated equipment, conduits, wiring, service equipment for the lighting service installed by the Georgia Department of Transportation as part of the State Route forty-two at CS two twenty-one ninety-nine, United Avenue, and CS twenty-three thirty-five, Sky Haven Road, VRU project listed as shown in exhibit A and for other purposes, now I make a motion to approve twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven eight and twenty-five dash R dash three nine eighty, motion to approve.
Motion by Chairman Amos, second by council member Juan, and before we go to a vote, council member Juan.
Thank you, I'm supportive of these, but clearly with the thirty-nine seventy-eight, the Monroe Drive Roundabout, that means it signals to me that this project is getting ready to move forward, so at some point, I'd appreciate a briefing from the department or from GDOT about that project status, but I'll support this motion.
Thank you, council member Juan, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, twelve yays, zero nays.
Twelve yays, zero nays, those two items are approved.
Thank you, Mr. President, Pro Tem, brings us to the last item for today, item number seventeen, twenty-five dash R dash three nine seven nine, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute renewal options, number two, for contract listing mercy on call debris removal services with C E R E S Environmental Services, Inc. on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of one year effective December twenty-eight. one year effective December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five through December twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-six and for other purposes. Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Chairman Amos, second by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? The votes close, eleven yeas, zero nays.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. That item is approved.
Mr. President, Pro Tim, that ends my report.
Next up is an additional committee. We have some business to handle in Committee of Hole, which is the City Utilities Committee.
Thank you and outstanding Committee of Hole. The items can be taken as a block. The items will need to be amended to attach the Ipro report, which I've emailed out to everyone. The two-five R three seven seven eight, item number three, page thirty-eight, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an agreement for F P A M D M D W M two-four-zero-six on call major electrical repairs and services with Brown Electrical L L B J V on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of three years with two one-year, two one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed two million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cent. Subject to and expressly contingent on the, on the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand twenty-eight budget, all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Development Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Number three, two-five R three seven seven nine, item four on page thirty-nine, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute an agreement for R F P A M D W M two-four-zero-six, one-two-four-zero-three-two-five B, on call major electrical repairs and services with Ruby Collins S E Joint Venture on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management and for a term of three years for two one-year renewals options in an amount not to exceed seventeen million, one hundred thousand dollars and zero cent. Subject and expressly contingent on the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand twenty-eight budgets, all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Motion to adopt as amended. Motion to amend.
Motion to amend by Chairman Lewis. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote on the motion to amend those two items.
The vote is open? The votes close, ten yeas, zero nays.
Ten yeas, zero nays. Those two items are amended.
Thank you. I now will motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended by Chairman Lewis. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dozier. Before we move to a vote, Councilmember Juan does have a question.
Thank you. This is a question for the administration. First off, a comment that I think it's in very bad form for us to be going into the committee the whole on a full council day to add an Ipro report that we did not receive in committee for a twenty million dollar contract. I see from our notes in terms of the agenda that we're going to be sending this post haste. So I want to understand from the department, uh, from the administration, one, why the Ipro is late, and then second, why we're cramming this through today and what the urgency is, because otherwise I'm not comfortable. I just think it's really bad form, um, for us to be asked to review an Ipro report on the fly.
DC Fletcher?
Quentin Fletcher, Department of Watershed Management. Um, Councilmember Juan, we can, we can defer to the Department of Procurement regarding um, the Ipro. Um, we both received the Ipro report on last week. Um, this legislation has been with C U C for, I believe, um, two cycles. And the reason for the post haste, utilizing this contract in conjunction with several capital improvement projects, we are seeing long delays for electrical equipment. And so this is to make sure that we pull forward with at least one project, which is at the Chattahoochee Water Treatment Plant, to make sure it's completed before the FIFA World Cup.
Is there anyone from procurement? I mean, the irony of it is, is the Ipro report actually is post-dated October fourteenth because it already anticipated it wasn't going to go into the City Utilities meeting next cycle. So again, you, I think you're putting us in a really awkward spot here, um, when we have, I know, uh, in terms of committees, asked that Ipro reports come to us at least twenty-four hours even before the committee. So is there any from, from the administration who can speak to this? Mr. Pace, procurement, law, or finance? I, I, I think we just need an explanation to get us comfortable with, with, uh, this kind of breach of protocol.
DeShawn Drake Poole, Assistant Director for the Department of Procurement. Part of the delay was us getting the responses, the appropriate responses to the Ipro findings and then running it through our approval, which includes the, uh, review by the CPO and the COO.
Uh, responses from the Department of Watershed?
No. We were, we worked collectively to get the responses to the Ipro findings.
Okay, so who, who prepared those responses? Or who were you waiting on for those responses? Watershed or procurement?
Well, we worked collaboratively with the project manager who's over the project. And then we did have to get some documents to, uh, support the findings.
I'm not sure. I see someone else behind you. I don't know if there was an additional comment. I'm, I'm just curious. Again, it's a twenty million dollar contract, so it's not a small thing, and I, I think it warrants this discussion. I see Mr. Pace, too. Wow, we got the cold cavalry out here.
Brandy Stanley, Director, Implementation, Department of Procurement. Um, we did have a couple of observations that required us to check the formulas on those and to get updated documents. So in the process of doing that, along with the user agency, to get the responses to substantiate, I'm sorry, I just ran up here.
That's okay.
Um, to substantiate any of the responses that had observations. So we took the time to go through those. And again, as Ms. Poole stated, it had to go through our leadership approval as well as the executive offices.
Okay, and if I recall correctly, this has been held for two cycles in committee. So it's taken that four cycles. All right, y'all aren't making me feel better because it was held that long for Ipro report and the delay was because of additional clarification. It wasn't a very, what I would consider to be a simple innocuous finding and, and resolution. And so y'all are actually pushing me in, in the, the opposite direction in terms of comfort. Mr. Pace, I don't know if you want to add anything or not. No, he doesn't.
Yeah, what we've definitely taken a look at, um, making sure that we respond to those observations in a timely manner involving our user agency, RISC or OCC, if those responses are needed, so that we can expedite the process and ensure that we get those reports back in a timely manner for leadership and executive review.
All right. Thanks for the explanation. Um, so colleagues, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold my nose on this and support it. I, I just, um, the findings are, with the explanations, rather innocuous, and they're, they're not anything that would have raised in my head an alarm, um, while we were in committee. So, you know, I, any questions I would have asked on the fourteenth, um, I wouldn't have asked because of the, I just, I'm, again, I think it's bad form, bad protocol. Um, and I just hope that this signal for y'all, uh, for the administration is that, um, this is going to be one of those very rare exceptions. Um, and I understand because of the urgency of the work and the fact that we are going to send this post haste, um, again, I will, I'll hold my nose and, and keep it, keep us moving forward. So, uh, Mr. President Pro Tim, my yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close, ten yeas, zero nays.
Ten yeas, zero nays. Those two items are approved. I believe that does complete our work that is needed to be done in Committee of a Hole. So Chairman Lewis, if you'd like to make that motion to?
I make, I make a motion to exit Committee of a Hole.
Motion to exit Committee of a Hole made by Chairman Lewis, second by Councilmember Dozier. Please prepare the vote to exit Committee of a Hole. If you will withdraw your motions, I've now just been told we have an additional item that needs to be addressed in Committee of a Hole that I was just now made aware of. So if you please withdraw your second and your?
I withdraw my motion.
So please prepare, or it's, it's been removed. And so now, that is in Committee on Counsel. And was that led by?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Bakhtiari?
Yes, Vice Chair Bakhtiari will provide this report today.
All right, we do have one additional item, as I mentioned, to take care of in Committee of a Hole that is on Committee on Counsel. Uh, it is an appointment, so we're going to go ahead and handle that and then come out of Committee of a Hole. Vice Chair Bakhtiari?
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tim. Um, we, I'm going to go ahead, as we're in Committee of the Hole, to ask, I believe we have Mr. Gray in attendance, so I'm going to go ahead and read the legislation again. Twenty-five R, uh, twenty-five dash R dash thirty-eight ninety-seven, an amended resolution by Committee on Counsel appointing Mr. Todd Gray to the governing board of the Office of the Inspector General as a representative of the Atlanta Business League for a term of three years, said term to commence upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes. And I believe that Mr. Gray is here. So please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve.
All right, thank you, and good afternoon, members of counsel, and happy birthday to Councilman Amos over there. I'm Todd Gray, I'm an Atlanta native. Uh, my career spans twenty years in areas of supplier diversity, procurement, and also social responsibility. I've served over ten years, uh, on the Board of Ethics and also the Governing Board of Office of Inspector General Ethics, and my passion is to uphold the rights of our employees and citizens, assuring appropriate operations and governance and partnership with the Office of Inspector General. And I look forward to working with my fellow board members and OIG to build the trust and effectiveness of the OIG, that the OIG office requires to be successful in this work. As we all know, this work is mission critical to the strength of the legacy of Atlanta, and leadership is about doing what's right. So I would like to thank each member of council for your commitment to this work, your courage in this area, and I look forward to continuing to serve in this capacity to assure that the citizens of Atlanta and our employees' rights are upheld as we continue to make sure we have a culture of ethics and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, and appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Vice Chair Bakhtiari, second by Council, Councilmember Westmoreland. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. That item or that appointment is approved.
Mr. Gray, thank you. You're, it's approved, and, um, somebody from the clerk's office will be in touch with you about next steps.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, I will go ahead and motion to exit out of Committee.
Yes, now that does conclude our business in Committee of a Hole. Motion to exit Committee of a Hole by Vice Chair Bakhtiari, second by Councilmember Juan. Please prepare the vote, the exit Committee of a Hole.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? We're trying to close it. Is she back? The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Okay.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. We're out of Committee of a Hole.
Um, thank you. I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve all items in gross from Committee of the Hole.
Motion by Councilmember Bakhtiari and second by Councilmember Juan to approve all items made in, all actions made in Committee of a Hole in gross. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. All item, all actions seconded in Committee of a Hole have been approved and in gross. And now we will, actually, I want to hear from Councilmember Amos and then Councilmember Lewis as two items in Transportation and two items in City Utilities need to move post haste. So Councilmember Amos?
Thank you, sir. Make a motion to move items, um, number twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero eight and, um, item twenty-five dash R dash three nine zero nine to the mayor's office post haste.
You go ahead and add your items. We go ahead and do that, Mr. Parliamentarian.
Yes, sir. I would like to add items two-five R three seven seven eight, two-five and three, two-five R three seven seven nine to the mayor's office post haste.
Thank you, councilmembers. Clerk, do you have those four items listed?
And three nine oh nine. One moment.
So motion to approve, or motion to send those four items post haste by Councilmember Amos, second by Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare that vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? Yeah, just to show. The votes closed, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. Those four items will be sent post haste to the mayor's office. Chair Bakhtiari, Vice Chair Bakhtiari, please finish your C O C report, and then we will go back to Chairman Lewis to finish his City Utilities report.
Thank you. Um, item number one, twenty-five dash shee dash zero zero seven five, a communication from councilmembers Liliana Bakhtiari, District Five, Alex Wan, District Six, Howard Shook, District Seven, Mary Norwood, District Eight, and Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large, as amended by Committee on Counsel, appointing Ms. Deborah Snell to serve as a member of the Human Relations Commission. This appointment is for a term of three years, um, and the recommendation is to adopt as amended.
This is coming out of Committee on Counsel, so if there's any second, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. That item is approved.
Thank you. If there are no objections, may we take items two to three together as a block?
Please.
Item number two, twenty-five dash shee dash zero one one zero, a communication from councilmembers Liliana Bakhtiari, Alex Wan, and Matt Westmoreland, appointing Mr. James Cheeks to serve as a member of the Zoning Review Board. This appointment is for a term of two years. Item number three, twenty-five dash shee dash zero one one one, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, Dickens, appointing Mr. Cyril Turner to serve as a Commissioner of the Department of Public Works for the City of Atlanta. Both items come before the body favorable in their committee's purview and from the Committee on Counsel, and the recommendation is to adopt.
Please prepare that vote. Please prepare that vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. Those two items were adopted.
Thank you. Item number four, twenty-five dash R dash thirty-nine eighty-one, an amended resolution by committee on council, appointing Mr. Drew Williamson to the Ethics Board as the representative of the Metro Atlanta Chamber of Commerce for a term of three years, and said term to commence upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes. The, our motion to adopt is amended.
Motion to adopt is amended, made by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, 13 yeas, 0 nays.
Thank you. This brings us to our-
13 yeas, 0 nays. That item is approved.
Thank you. This order, this brings us to our ordinances for first reading. Twenty-five dash O dash fifteen forty-seven, ordinance by committee on council to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Section sixty-two dash two, sixty-six dash two, sorry, precinct boundary lines and polling places by amending the 2017 precincts and polling places ordinance in Fulton County precincts as identified by Attachment A, City of Atlanta Precinct Values Election Day Polling Locations, eleven to eleven for 2025 and for other purposes. I will go ahead and make the motion to refer this back to committee on council.
Motion to refer back to committee on council. Is there a second? Second by Chairman, or Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13, 13 yeas, 0 nays. That item is approved or sent back to committee.
Thank you. This brings us to our ordinances for second reading and our final legislative item. Item number six, twenty-five dash O dash fifteen twenty-four, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea El Boone, as substituted by Finance Exec Committee, authorizing, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the FY 2026 budget in the amount of $50,000 and zero cents relating to the Atlanta Commission on Women Trust Fund and for other purposes. Adopt, my motion is to adopt as substituted.
Motion to adopt on substitute. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? 13 yeas, the votes closed, 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. That item is approved.
Thank you. This concludes my legislative business.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bakhtiari. Back up on home plate, Chairman Lewis.
Thank you. A, number one, two-five R, three-eight-nine-five, item number one, page thirty-eight, an amended resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated need to execute an agreement for IFB CON, C-O-N-D-W-M, two-five-zero-two, one-two-five-zero-one-four-three, EIB Valley of the Hawks Construction Wetlands product, project with integral municipal services Corporation, Rockdale Pipeline Incorporated, joint venture on behalf of the, of the Department of Watershed Management for a term to commence on the date of notice to proceed an issue of eighteen months and in amount not to exceed $7,717,733 and zero cent. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account number listed herein and for other purposes. I'll go ahead and send this back to committee.
You're making a motion to send this back to committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boone. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, 11 yeas, 0 nays.
11 yeas, 0 nays. That item is referred back to committee. Chairman Lewis, that does complete your report.
President Pro Tem, thank you for coming back to me. This completes my report.
You're welcome. Now, zoning committee chair, Matt Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. We have one item. It's an ordinance for second read. It's legislation number twenty-five O fourteen-twenty Z twenty-five forty-nine, fourteen-eight-eight, Bolton Road Northwest. It's ordinances to rezone from I-1-C to I-1 for a change of conditions. Recommendation coming out of committee is to file.
Recommendation coming out of committee is to file. Please prepare the vote on that.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, that's 12 yeas, 0 nays.
12 yeas, 0 nays. That item is filed.
That concludes the quickest committee report so far.
Indeed. Next, next up is Community Development and Human Services Committee Chairman Winston.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. Colleagues, I had two items that I pulled off of consent. The first is twenty-five dash R thirty-eight ninety-nine. I'd like to make a motion to substitute, and this substitute replaces some appointees by councilmembers.
Motion, motion to substitute by Chairman Winston, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Please prepare the vote on the substitute.
One moment. The vote, one moment. The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, 12 yeas, 0 nays.
12 yeas, 0 nays. Substitutes before us.
Thank you. A resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, as substituted by Atlanta City Council, appointing members to serve on the City of Atlanta's Reparations Study Commission and for other purposes. I'd like to make a motion to approve as substituted.
Motion, motion approve as substituted by Chairman Winston, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. That item is approved on substitute.
Thank you. And the second item that was removed from the consent agenda on page eight, which is item number three, twenty-five dash R thirty-nine zero-one, I'd like to make a motion to bring forth the substitute which replaces the fiscal agent for the donation.
Motion to substitute by Chairman Winston, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote on the substitute.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed.
12 yeas.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
Mr. Wong, what's, what is your vote? 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. Substitutes before us.
Thank you. Twenty-five dash R thirty-nine zero-one, a resolution by Councilmember Westmoreland, as substituted by the Atlanta City Council, authorizing a donation in a total amount not to exceed $250,000 and zero cents to the Georgia State University Research Foundation to support emergency home repairs for legacy residents in order to help prevent displacement pursuant to section number listed of the City of Atlanta's Charter and for other purposes. I'd like to make a motion to approve as substituted.
Motion to approve as substituted by Chairman Winston, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. That item is approved on substitute.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Winston. Last but not least, we have a Finance Executive Committee report being given by Vice Chair Wong.
All right, colleagues, if you'll turn to page fifty-six in the agenda. First item is a communications. It's twenty-five C zero-zero-nine-zero, a communication from Donald T. Panovi, CPA, Chair Audit Committee, submitting the performance audit report Beltline SSD Financial Review 2025, motion from committees to accept and file.
Motion from the committee is accept and file. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The votes closed, 13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. Item's accepted and filed.
That takes us to ordinances for second read. First item is twenty-five O fifteen oh nine, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute all appropriate documents that would grant Georgia Power Company for an amount not less than $377,500 and zero cents for utility easements across the city, own real property located in the parcel ID numbers listed, known as Spinks Collins Park, located at twenty-one oh one Collins Drive Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three one eight. To permit Georgia Power Company to go in upon, along, across, under, and through the property is defined in the easements, waiting real estate and procurement code, Article 10, subdivision three, sections two, fifteen seventy-one, and fifteen seventy-two of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes. This came out of committee favorable on condition. The condition has been met, so the motion is to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, that's 12 yeas, 0 nays.
You're good. You're good, okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Was it thirteen?
Twelve yeas.
Twelve yeas, 0 nays. Item is approved.
Okay. Item twenty-five O fifteen twenty-seven, ordinance by Councilmember Howard Shook to ratify Mayor Andre Dickens' executive order directing that the chief of police, the commissioner of the Department of City Planning, the director of the mayor's office of film, entertainment, and nightlife, commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, the chief of staff, the commissioner of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the director of the mayor's office of special events, accept no new applications for permits related to outdoor vending on public or private property, permits for activities which may impede upon the right-of-way or require closings thereof, closures thereof, and permits to authorize the conduct of large gatherings and outdoor festivals where such permitted activity shall occur from June eleventh to July nineteen, 2026, the FIFA operational period within the area designated in this order for the purpose of providing for adequate strategic planning by the City of Atlanta and other public and private entities integral to the successful hosting of FIFA World Cup twenty-six, directing that the chief of staff, the commissioner of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the department, I'm sorry, director of the mayor's office of special events, shall temporarily require the submission of all large gathering or outdoor festival permits for such outdoor events occurring during the FIFA operational period citywide, no earlier than 150 days prior to such events to ensure an adequate allocation of public safety and other city resources, and providing for exceptions for assemblies and for certain outdoor events with priority status established by city ordinance, and for street, sidewalk, and right-of-way closures which shall be necessary due to emergencies and for other purposes. This came out favorable from the committee. The motion is to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes closed, 12 yeas, 0 nays.
12 yeas, 0 nays. That item is approved.
Mr. Pro Tem, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wong. And that does conclude our committee reports. Finally, we will move on to personal papers. Before we take the one item for immediate consideration, I've been requested to let two councilmembers introduce their ordinance first. We'll start with Councilmember Collins. You want to read your paper in, please?
Thanks, Collins. Collins, you're on the list. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Amos ID number three-eight-eight-three-eight, an ordinance by Councilmember Ishay Collins, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the FY 2026 Water and Wastewater Sublean Revenue Bond Fund, Fund Number five-zero-eight-six, budget in the amount of $7,500, $500,000 and zero cents to transfer funds from the reserves for appropriations and add funds to the annual stormwater infrastructure project and for other purposes.
They refer to the City Utilities Committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Boone, go ahead and read your immediate consideration paper in, please.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. A resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone, Jason Dozier, Liliana Bakhtiara, Matt Westmoreland, Michael Julian Bond, Antonio Lewis, Ishay Collins, Matt Westmoreland, Byron De Amos, Jason Winston, Marcy Caria Overstreet. An item for immediate consideration, item number three-eight-eight-four-nine, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea El Boone, expressing the support of the Atlanta City Council for the members of the Women's National Basketball Players Association, WNBA, including the Atlanta Dream and urging the Women's National Basketball Association, WNBA, to negotiate equitable contracts that provide fair compensation, benefits, and working conditions for its players and for other purposes. Whereas the Women's National Basketball Players Association is the first professional sports union for women established in 1998 to promote the interests, aspirations, and long-term visions of WNBA players, and whereas the members of the WNBA are professional athletes employed across 13 teams in 13 U.S. cities, including the Atlanta Dream, who play their home games at Gateway Center Arena in College Park, Georgia, with additional expansion teams anticipated in Toronto, Portland, Cleveland, Detroit, and Philadelphia, and whereas the members of the WNBA are now engaged in their six collective bargaining negotiations with the WNBA at advocating for higher wages, stronger benefits, and professional working conditions that reflect their invaluable contributions to women's basketball. And whereas, players currently receive no shared revenue under the current collective bargaining agreement, in contrast with other major professional sports leagues in which players receive between 48.8% and 51% of league revenue, and whereas, the WNBA is experiencing historic growth, including record-breaking attendance, expanding media contracts, first-time expansion since 2008, and significant increases in franchise valuations, making this pivotal moment for equity in professional women's sports. And whereas equitable compensation and improved working conditions for WNBA players would promote gender pay equity, demonstrate that women athletes are valued as professionals, and strengthen the role of the WNBA in advancing representation, opportunity, and community impact, and whereas the WNBA's current contract with the WNBA expires October 31st, 2025, and failure to reach an agreement risks a strike lockout and other disruptions with serious consequences for players, teams, fans, and host cities such as Atlanta. And whereas, Atlanta has a proud and longstanding history of labor activism with the labor unions contributing to improve wages, benefits, and workplace activities that have advanced economic stability and mobility for workers and families across the city. And whereas, the Atlanta Dream and their players contribute to the vitality of Atlanta's cultural and civic life, inspire young athletes, and generate positive economic, social impacts for the communities in which they live and work. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Atlanta, Atlanta City Council of the City of Atlanta, that the Atlanta City Council hereby expresses its strong support for the members of the Women's National Basketball Players Association, including the Atlanta Dream, and urges the Women's National Basketball Association to work diligently and in good faith to negotiate a fair contract before the October 31st, 25 deadline. Be it further resolved that the Atlanta City Council affirms that the players of the WNBA- WNBA deserve equitable wages, benefits, and working conditions that prioritize their health, safety, and holistic well-being, and calls upon the league to ensure that its growth and prosperity are shared with the women whose talent, commitment, and sacrifice make the league possible.
Second.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Bond, seconded by Boone. Councilwoman Boone, seconded by Councilmember Dozier. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close? Ten yeas, zero nays?
Ten yeas, zero nays. That item is adopted.
Thank you. Next item? That item was adopted. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you very much for this very important resolution today. Elm's ID number three eight nine three zero, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone requesting the mayor his designate to install traffic calming devices on Harlem Road Southwest in order to reduce speeding and for other purposes.
I'm sorry. What, um, what was Elm's number on that one? Councilmember Boone?
Three eight nine three zero.
I refer to the Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee. Elm's ID number three eight eight four, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to pay outstanding invoices in an amount not to exceed four hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred eight dollars and eighty-six cents for contract CBG one two one zero two seven two, vehicle rental with enterprise leasing company of Georgia LLC utilizing state of Georgia statewide contract nine 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 SPD ES four zero one nine nine three seven six one S zero two on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Elm's ID number three eight nine zero five, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone authorizing the mayor his designate to execute the First Amendment to Agreement IFB AMDWM two four zero seven one two five zero zero one two A, landscaping and grounds maintenance to its Russell Landscaping Company LLC to add the Department of Aviation as an authorized user to add funds to the agreement in an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars and zero cents. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
Elm's ID number three eight nine three six, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone to amend the Code of Ordinances, City of Atlanta, Georgia, Chapter one one four Personnel, Article two, Compensation Payroll Deductions and Charitable Contributions, Division one, Section one one four two five, deduction of labor organizations dues from salary subsection G to allow for the recognition of the progressive firefighters of Georgia Labor Organization and to allow for the processing of payroll deductions of dues and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee.
Elm's ID number three eight eight three seven, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone to waive Chapter two, Article IX, Division one, Section two nine one oh, grant applications of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to ratify the City of Atlanta's grant application with the United States Department of Homeland Security, DHS, for the FY twenty-four non-competing continuation NCC funding for the FY nineteen, securing the city's program to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to accept the carryover funds of the NCC grant funding and to reallocate the FY twenty-five budget in the amount of six hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty dollars and seventy-six cents to reappropriate grant funds from DHS to authorize the mayor or the Director of the Mayor's Office of Emergency Preparedness as his designate to enter into any required agreements necessary for the implementation of this award and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Elm's ID number three eight nine zero seven, a resolution by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone authorizing the mayor his designate to execute special procurement agreement SPPS W A T L. two five zero nine one two six zero zero five two, Community Navigator Program with the Latino Community Fund, Inc., on behalf of the Mayor's Office of International and Immigrant Affairs pursuant to Section two dash one one nine one of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for a term of one year with two one-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand zero dollars, with the possibility for an additional one hundred thousand dollars for future allocation by the Chief Financial Officer. If funding becomes available, all contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Elm's ID number three eight nine three four, an ordinance by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone to amend Chapter two, Administration, Article Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division General, Section two, one 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 six, currently reserved to require the Department of Procurement to conduct post-award debriefing sessions that would be open to offers that submitted bids or proposals during procurement is conducted under competitive sourcing methods and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Mr. President Protem, that concludes my items. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boone. Moving back up to the top, Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir. President Protem, Elm's ID, Elm's ID three eight eight four one, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provision contained in Section two dash eleven eighty-seven, Article ten, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions on behalf of the Department of Aviation to exercise renewal option and to expand distributed antenna system coverage to other airport facilities not complicated by agreement listed indoor/outdoor distributed antenna system upgrade and expansion with Cleveland Electric Uptown Symphony JV in the amount not to exceed thirteen million dollars. All services will be charged to and paid from listed account herein and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
Elm's ID three eight nine zero six, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provision contained in Section two dash eleven eighty-seven, Article ten, Procurement of Real Estate Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, as well as other conflicting code provisions to execute Amendment one to listed Contract Passenger Wait Time Reporting System with XVUS USA, Inc. at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport on behalf of the Department of Aviation to authorize additional funding in the amount not to exceed one hundred ninety thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars thirty-five cents to transition to the existing XVUS platform from ATL's internal network to the XVUS Aerial Cloud environment for a total contract amount not to exceed one million fifteen thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars thirty-six cents. All contracted costs to be charged to and paid from account number listed herein and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
Elm's three eight nine two seven, ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to amend Chapter one five zero Traffic and Vehicles, Article six, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Division four Residential Parking Permits, to expand the Residential Parking Permit Program titled Vine City Residential Parking Permit Area to waive certain requirements of City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Section one fifty dash one forty-eight, and one fifty one forty-nine, and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
Elm's ID three eight nine two eight, a resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos requesting the mayor or his designate to make an all-ways stop control intersection at Griffin Street Northwest and Cameron Boulevard Northwest, and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
Elm's ID three eight nine two four, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to amend Chapter seventy-four Environment, Article ten, nuisance with the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, and to add Code Session seventy-four dash one seven six to create an undeveloped vacant property nuisance ordinance within and shall be established that unsecure, undeveloped property that remains vacant by more than sixty days and that poses a public nuisance or public safety risk, endangers the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city, and to require owners to install and maintain a secure perimeter fence and other approved barriers, and to provide for definitions, exceptions, enforcement, and penalties, and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the CDHS Committee.
Elm's ID three eight nine two six, an ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos to amend City Code Session to provide for the issuance of permits authorizing the use of household furniture, temporary structures, and/or non-permanent fixtures in the city right-of-way when such use involves three or more persons or two or more vehicles and result in the obstruction of slowing of the normal flow of traffic. To authorize the Chief of Police or his designate to issue such permits for a specified date, time, and location, and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
That's my last paper, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up, Councilmember Batiari.
Thank you. Elm's ID three eight nine oh eight, a resolution by Liliana Batiari and Councilmember Carden Wykoff authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to donate, oh, I'm sorry. Let me start over. A resolution by Councilmember Liliana Batiari, Carden Wykoff, Winston, Juan, Amos, Dozier, Norwood, Hillis, Bond, Lewis, and Boone, authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to donate an amount not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to Mercy Housing Southeast pursuant to Section six dash three oh six of the City of Atlanta's Charter for the public purpose of delivering deeply affordable housing units in the Old Fourth Ward neighborhood by supporting the Henderson Place redevelopment located at five fourteen Irwin Street Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three one two, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer is designate to make all payments from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you. A resolution of Elm's ID number three eight nine three eight, a resolution by Councilmember Liliana Batiari and Carden Wykoff endorsing the use of District Two discretionary renew bond, renew bond funds in the amount of six hundred forty-five thousand dollars and zero cents to be managed through a project management agreement with Atlanta Downtown Improvement District for the purpose of implementing sidewalk repair and improvement projects in downtown Atlanta and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
Thank you. Elm's ID three eight nine two three, an ordinance by Councilmember Liliana Batiari, Carden Wykoff, Dozier, Winston, Amos, Juan, Norwood, Hillis, Lewis, and Boone, to amend the nineteen eighty-two Atlanta zoning ordinance as amended requiring primary pedestrian entrances, entrances to provide push-button activators where relationship with the building to street is required and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Zoning Committee.
Elm's ID three eight nine three two, a resolution by Councilmembers Liliana Batiari, Matt Westmoreland, Winston, Wykoff, Amos, Dozier, Juan, Norwood, Hillis, Boone, Overstreet, Lewis, and Collins, launching the It Starts With Me campaign to help Atlanta achieve and maintain fifty percent average tree canopy cover within the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Protem, that concludes my personal papers.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up, Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. First up is Elm's ID number three eight nine three one, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to amend Chapter seventy-eight Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta by adding a new section, seven eight dash three seven, to require that all engine companies and ladder truck companies of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department be staffed with a minimum of four personnel per apparatus, per shift, to provide procedures when on-duty personnel are not available, to allow, uh, limited exceptions for companies under extreme circumstances to adopt legislative findings and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee.
Elm's ID number three eight eight nine five, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond authorizing the mayor his designate to enter into a special procurement SPPS zero zero C two five zero nine one two zero zero five four, managed service provider for inmate services on behalf of the Department of Corrections with Keefe Commissary Network, LLC, contracted to ensure that there is no cessation of commissary services for the inmates and detainees in the Atlanta City Detention Center in an amount not to exceed five hundred forty thousand dollars and zero cents annually. All commissions owed to the city shall be deposited into a trust fund, zero nine zero two zero one, correctional food services, three four two three zero zero one, proceeds from inmates, three four two zero 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 zero, adult correctional institutions, six zero zero two seven zero, inmate deposits, six nine nine nine, no capital trust projects, and all contracted work shall be charged to and paid from seven seven zero one trust fund, zero nine zero one zero one, corrections, commissary of, commissary of corrections, and zero two one two zero zero one, consulting, professional services, three two zero 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 zero, chief executives, six zero zero four zero five, jail fund administration, six nine 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 nine, non-capital trust projects, and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. And colleagues, just to point out, we are at quorum, so please, no one leave this room till we get done, unless someone journeys back in here. Councilmember Bond.
Elm's ID number three eight nine two five, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to amend the sunset dates of certain allocation districts, tax allocation districts of the City of Atlanta, and to establish sunset dates of certain tax allocation districts of the City of Atlanta, and to provide that those tax allocation districts of the City of Atlanta shall not sunset prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and fifty-five, specifically including the West Side Tax Allocation District, Perry Bolton Tax Allocation District, East Side Tax Allocation District, Beltline Tax Allocation District, Hamilton Road Tax Allocation District, Hollowell Martin Luther King Tax Allocation District, Metropolitan Parkway Tax Allocation District, and Stadium Neighborhoods Tax Allocation District, to ratify and confirm and approve the amendments to the redevelopment plans in respect of the foregoing tests, to formally request the participation and consent of the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County and the Atlanta Board of Education, and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the CDHS Committee.
Elm's ID number three eight nine four zero, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond requesting the mayor or his designate to close the driveway and remove the no parking signs located at two six one Peter Street Southwest, and for other purposes.
I don't refer to the Transportation Committee.
That concludes my papers, Mr. President Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Bond. Next up, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem. I have two items today. The first one is Elm's ID number three eight seven nine two, an ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier to rezone from SPI twenty-one, S, Subarea seven, Historic West End, Nader Park, Special Public Historic West End, Nader Park, Special Public Interest, District Subarea seven, to SPI twenty one Subarea eight for property located at Zero People Street Southwest, parcel ID fourteen zero one one seven zero 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 seven zero seven nine eight to modify the official zoning map and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the Zoning Committee.
And final item is ELM's ID number three eight seven nine four. An ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier to amend the Land Use Planning Section of the twenty twenty five Plan A City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan so as to re-designate property located at Zero People Street Southwest from the low-density residential development pattern designation to medium-density residential classification and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the CDHS Committee.
That concludes my items for introduction.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. This is a huge paper for the South Side and a huge paper for the future of the growth of the City of Atlanta. ELM's three eight nine three three. A resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis requesting that the City of Atlanta designate or acquire property within the Gilbert Garden area for the purpose of developing affordable housing to direct the Department of City Planning, Office of Housing, and Community Development to conduct a feasibility study and implementation, implementations plan and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Atlanta is experiencing an affordable housing shortage.
This is not immediate, is it?
No.
Okay. You don't have to read the whereas.
I want to. I want to make sure that the people can hear it.
Okay. That's fine.
And so whereas the City of Atlanta is experiencing an affordable housing shortage that threatens this, the stability of families and communities across the city and whereas the Gilbert Garden area represents an opportunity site in the District twelve with potential for new affordable housing development, giving its community access, transit, and employment centers, and being finally resolved that based on the results of the feasibility study, the Department of City Planning, Office of Housing, and Community Development shall prepare and recommend strategy for acquisition and designation of the Gilbert Garden as an affordable housing development site within one hundred and twenty days. Thank you.
I'll refer to the CDHS Committee. Councilmember Juan.
All right. Thank you. ELM's ID three eight 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 seven. A resolution by Councilmember Alex Juan authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute an encroachment agreement with the Peachtree Hills Civic Association, Inc. for the installation of a fully solar-powered automatic license plate reader on a twelve-foot-high flock pole in the Peachtree Hills Avenue Northeast Right Of Way located at three hundred eighty Peachtree Hills Avenue Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh five, and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the Transportation Committee.
ELM's ID three eight 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 eight. A resolution by Councilmember Alex Juan authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute an encroachment agreement with Peachtree Hills Civic Association, Inc. for the installation of a fully solar-powered automatic license plate reader on a twelve-foot-high flock pole in the Hurst Drive, Hurst Drive Right Of Way located at two two seven Lindbergh Drive Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh five, and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the Transportation Committee.
ELM's three eight nine three five. An ordinance by Councilmember Alex Juan to establish a one hundred eighty-day moratorium on the acceptance of any new demolition permit applications for properties located on Peachtree Circle Northeast between Sixteenth Street Northeast and Peachtree Street Northeast and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the Zoning Committee.
ELM's three eight nine three seven. An ordinance by Councilmember Alex Juan authorizing a donation in an amount not to exceed fifty five thousand dollars and zero cents from the Council President carryforward account to various nonprofit organizations pursuant to section six three oh six of the City of Atlanta's Charter and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
And finally, three eight nine three nine. An ordinance from Councilmember Alex Juan authorizing the transfer of funds from various Atlanta City Council carryforward accounts to the District six account. Now, okay, the appropriate distribution and expense accounts to replenish funds for fiscal year twenty twenty six and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the Finance Executive Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem.
Councilmember Winston.
Thank you. I've got two items. First item, ELM's ID three eight eight nine three. An ordinance by Councilmember Jason Winston authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Department of Grants and Community Development to ratify and affirm all services rendered and payments made under the Community Development Software Agreement number listed with Benavent, Inc. for the term beginning November the first, twenty twenty four, through October thirty first, twenty twenty five, in an amount not to exceed forty eight thousand dollars and zero cents for the administration and disbursement of government funds through its neighborly application management platform for the mayor or his designee to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the ratification of all services rendered and payments made during the period. All contractual work shall be charged to and paid from the account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
I'll refer to the CDHS Committee.
Second item, ELM's ID three eight eight nine four. An ordinance by Winston authorizing the mayor or his designee in his sole discretion to enter into and execute the appropriate agreements and other documents with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development that the CD attorney deems necessary or advisable or in order to effectuate the city's receipt of the twenty twenty five Community Development Block Grant Programs, Emergency Solutions Grant Programs, Home Investment Fund Program and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program entitlement grants on behalf of the Department of Grants and Community Development and subject to the mayor's execution of such agreements to amend the FY twenty twenty six Community Development Fund budget in an amount not to exceed seven million two hundred thousand seven hundred fifty three dollars and zero cents for the purpose of funding the twenty twenty five CD, CDs BG program and the twenty twenty five ESG program to amend the FY twenty twenty six Intergovernmental Grant Fund budget in an amount not to exceed fifteen million three hundred ninety nine thousand and one hundred forty two dollars and zero cents for the purpose of funding the twenty twenty five HOP program and to amend the FY twenty twenty six Home Investment Fund budget in an amount not to exceed two million thirty one thousand eight hundred four dollars and twenty, twenty nine cents for the purpose of funding the home program by adding to anticipations and appropriations fund awarded by HUD in an amount not to exceed twenty four million six hundred thirty one thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars and twenty nine cents and to authorize the mayor's designee to enter into various contractual agreements with subrecipients and project sponsors awarded in the twenty twenty five Notice of Funding Availability and to amend the twenty twenty five Intergovernmental Grant Fund budget for the purpose of reprogramming twenty twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four HOP funds in an amount not to exceed five hundred, five hundred one thousand dollars and zero cents and to amend the twenty twenty five Community Development Fund budget for the purpose of reprogramming twenty twenty CDBG CARES Act funds in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars and zero cents. All contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed in here.
I'll refer to the CDHS Committee.
Thank you.
I have one item. ELM's number three eight nine four one. An ordinance by Councilmember Hillis to waive certain provisions of Part two Land Development Code, Part sixteen Zoning Section number listed to allow six-foot walls and fences in the half-deep front yards for property located in the Riverside Neighborhood and for other purposes. I'll refer to the Zoning Committee. Colleagues, we are now at general remarks. Any general remarks? Councilmember Boon?
Yes. Please join the Atlanta Commission on Women for a town hall meeting October fourteenth, six o'clock PM. Special guest speaker, State Representative Inga Willis. Women, please come out to discuss women's issues such as employment, health, and any concerns. The Atlanta Commission on Women is interested in hearing from you October fourteenth here in this very chambers. The officers are Chairperson Candace Mitchell Esquire, Vice Chair Kajara Anderson, Carly Swift Esquire, and others. Please join the Atlanta Commission on Women on October fourteenth here in the Atlanta City Council chambers.
Thank you. Councilmember Amos.
Yes, sir. Of course, as this time of year is work anniversary's time. Have District three's very own Aleah Fleming celebrating two years. James Ariger, District eight, fourteen years. Mr. President Protem, your own Denise Word, nine years. District nine, twenty years. Then you have Mary Tanner celebrating twelve years, and Jasmine Tale celebrating eleven years. So thank you to everyone that has been here. Oh, you have one more, Ms. Price celebrating one year. So congratulations to everyone on their anniversary.
Thank Councilmember Amos. Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President Protem colleagues and to the viewing public. I want to wish everybody a happy Atlanta pride. This is the week every fall that we celebrate. It'll be, it'll start with the mayor's pride reception on Thursday evening, followed by festivities in District six in Piedmont Park, and the parade is on Sunday stepping off not far from here at noon. We will have a, City Council will have a float. Invite all y'all to come join us and celebrate in the festivities. Thank you.
Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to wish a happy birthday to Byron Amos.
Yay!
Was it like, like thirty, thirty-two? There you go. And then also want to, I also want to congratulate my team. Wish a happy birthday to Matty Berger on my staff, who is the only reason communications get out of my office, and I also want to congratulate Alex Manal on my team for passing the bar and officially becoming a lawyer. So I'm very lucky to have an amazing team. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lewis.
And I want to send prayers and every, every prayer I can to the Teamsters for the loss of President Emeritus Ralph Mears. Teamsters local five two seven south, referred to as PPWU, and the Prince's Union. Just want to send as, as many prayers as I can out to the Teamsters.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Any other members which need an announcement?
I'll just say, I'm, I'm the one wearing my pink today, so Happy Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And just as a nurse, former ICU nurse, encourage everyone to go out and get the cancer screenings that are very easy to do, that catch a lot of cancers, and that is not just breast cancer but colon cancer, prostate cancer. And as a forty-year-old, I went and had my first skin cancer checkup about a few months ago, and they caught two precancerous but very soon to become cancer, they thought, spots on my back that got cut out. So please go get a screen for your cancer, and again, Happy Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Journey roll call. We will now have a journey roll call from Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, plus one at large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, plus two at large. Councilmember Ishay Collins, plus three at large. Councilmember Jason A. Winston, District one. Councilmember Carden Wykoff, District two. Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District three. Councilmember Jason Dozier, District four. Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District five. Councilmember Alex Juan, District six. Councilmember Maranore, District eight. Council President Protem, Dustin Hillis, District nine.
Present.
Councilmember Andrea Elboon, District ten. Councilmember Marcy Carter, Overstreet, District eleven. Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District twelve.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there is no further business, after a very fun-filled committee of a whole council meeting, we stand adjourned.